Article 15 in the warrant for the annual town meeting. As we start the meeting, I just remind you that the fire chief has requested that I point out the fire exits. Although it doesn't appear that crowds will be a problem. There are two fire exits on the lower level of the auditorium, one on my immediate right, your left, and one on my left where you entered the room. There are also two fire exits at the upper level of the room, the rear of the hall behind the balconies. Please do not block these exits by standing or placing anything such as chairs in front of them. Fire chief has also requested that you not sit in the aisles or on the stairs between the balcony and the main floor. I'd like to remind you that assisted living, listening devices are available on the table next to the entrance on the main floor behind section one, and they're provided by the Municipal Commission on Disabilities. I also request that all cell phones be turned off while the meeting is in session. I recognize a number of familiar faces here tonight. I think that everybody's aware that we will be using electronic voting. As in the past, when you call for a vote, that cube to my left, your right, will turn green. When it turns green, voting's open. Press one for yes, two for no if you change your mind. Just go ahead and push whatever button you meant to push the first time, and that's what will be counted. You will have 15 seconds to record your vote. When it turns red, as you see now, voting will be closed. Couple of procedural motions, couple of procedural things I wanted to mention, and one has to do with the procedures for a motion for the previous question. And the shortened version of that is that I will not accept a motion for the previous question from somebody who has just finished speaking to an article, so as to avoid the advantage of getting the last word in. Motions for the previous question need to be made from the microphone. And for reconsideration, I remind you that last year at the annual town meeting, we had made a change to reconsideration, and that change being that a motion to reconsider may only be considered if the proponent provides, in the opinion of the moderator, factual information that was not available during this session when the original vote was taken. I think in particular what that means is that we've often seen as a parliamentary move, right after a vote has been taken, somebody will move reconsideration, not really wishing that we take it up, but rather to freeze the article, so to speak. The bylaw that we now have, in essence, ends that as a maneuver. That having been said, now for the business of the meeting. May we have a motion under Article 15, Mrs. Sullivan?
I move that the town vote to establish a capital improvement stabilization fund pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 40, Section 5B, for the purpose of direct funding capital projects or to offset debt payment related to capital projects.
Second.
Finance committee voted eight-zero to recommend. The finance director will speak to the article.
Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mrs. Moderator. John Adams, Finance Director. Last summer, the Finance Committee and management held discussions to review the town's fiscal policies, and one of the items that was brought up was how little actually the town spends in debt service within the confines of Proposition Two and a Half. So that's the voter initiative law that caps the annual tax levy increase to two and a half percent of the aggregate of property taxes. And in looking at the analysis showed that the town of Duxbury was spending less than half of one percent of its general fund operating revenues on capital expenditures related to debt. Our benchmarking policies call for like one to two and a half percent of our general fund operating revenues. And we also found that when debt service is paid off, there's no mechanism to prevent debt service from falling into the operating budget. So it was widely agreed that by creating a capital improvement stabilization fund, we could not only put away money for future capital projects, but we would also have a mechanism to invest those debt service funds that fall off the rolls in years or when our capital needs are less than those set by policy, back into our capital for future needs. So we feel that this mechanism and policy was a good way to help achieve our objective, and that objective was to guard against capital depreciation by planning and ensuring that there are sufficient funds available to reinvest in our fixed assets and our infrastructure.
Are there any questions or discussion under Article 15? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote at this point. This article will require a two-thirds vote, a two-thirds vote for it to pass. The green light's on, so voting is open. Motion passes seventy-seven to one. I'm sorry, seventy-seven to two. I'm gonna have to work on that eyeglass prescription. Article 16, please, Mrs. Sullivan.
Appropriate funds into the capital improvement stabilization fund. We were cautiously optimistic. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $169,571.46 into the capital improvement stabilization fund, and to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate $25,000 and transfer the sum of $144,571.46 as follows.
Second.
Do you want me to read the chart?
Please.
Okay. Amount: $29,511.57 from land acquisition, establishing, enabling statute, Chapter 44, Section 7, exempt debt. $17,613.61 from the pool, from annual town meeting, from 2009, Article 38. $312.31 from the Chandler School roof article, from annual town meeting, 2009, Article 37. $50,158.90 from DMS and DHS feasibility study, annual town meeting, from 2009, Article 36. $1,462.63 from the crematory cemetery office facility. This would be from annual town meeting in 2010, Article 14. $19,544.27 from the fire station design, annual town meeting in 2010, Article 15. $8,794.18 from the police station, and annual town meeting, 2011, Article 17. $98.49 DMS and DHS schematic design, annual town meeting from 2011, Article 18. $17,075.50 DMS and DHS construction, special town meeting in 2011, Article 1.
Thank you. Are there any questions or further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. The motion passes eighty-six to four. As on Saturday, I can tell, we have a very decisive group that votes quickly. We started with 15 seconds because I thought you might be slow. We're gonna go to 10 seconds, please. We'll get home that much quicker. Thank you. Article 17, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town increase the amount of the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account from $50,000 to $100,000, the account for which was previously authorized pursuant to the authority in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5F, establishing a separate fund for the receipt of a portion of the fees or charge paid by persons transported by town ambulances, and to authorize the town manager to expend the funds in such account for the purchase, maintenance, and operation of such ambulances, including maturing debt and interest.
Second.
Finance committee voted eight-zero to recommend. The purpose of the article is to put some money aside from the monies collected for the use of these ambulances because there is a prescribed replacement policy, and it will give us the ability to not have to have debt, as much debt, when we have to replace the ambulances.
Thank you. Any questions or concern? Seeing no questions, I'll call for a vote at this time. Motion carries ninety-three to one. Article 18, Mrs. Sullivan.
amend general bylaws, enforcement of the tax regulations, and authority for partial tax payments. I move that the town amend the general bylaws by adding a new Chapter 14 entitled Tax Title Payment Plans for the Purpose of Allowing Payment Plans for Tax Title Properties as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance committee voted eight-zero to recommend. This is a redo from the voter, from March town meeting in 2018. It was sent to the Attorney General's Office for review, and the language needed to be amended.
Seeing no questions or further discussion, I'm gonna call for a vote. This is a majority vote. And the motion carries ninety-two to two. Article 19, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the tax custodian for tax title purposes to the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of conveyance, care, custody, and control of a town-owned parcel of land located off Keene Street, identified by the assessor as parcel 025-500-006, containing 3.5 acres of land, more or less, and described in an instrument of taking recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 1711, page 523, and foreclosure affidavit in Book 1784, page 567. On such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen deems in the best interests of the town, which may be in exchange for land of conservation value, to be conveyed to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Finance committee voted eight-zero to recommend.
I believe Mr. Grady will be presenting information.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Article 19 proposes to give the selectmen the authority to seek bids on a 3.5-acre parcel of town-owned land that is landlocked, which means there's no way to access this property. The land is across from the Walter Copte playground off of Keene Street. The land was taken for non-payment of taxes and is surrounded by 27 acres of land owned by A.W. Perry Incorporated, a development company that plans to develop the land regardless of whether it gets this parcel from the town. A.W. Perry has approached the town with the interest in acquiring this parcel and has indicated a willingness to exchange this piece for 18 acres of land they own off of Congress Street. This 18-acre parcel is located within the Ashdod Forest Conservation Area and would enlarge and enhance this area of conservation land. In summary, this article would give the selectmen the authority to seek proposals for the sale of a three-and-a-half-acre parcel of landlocked town land. Anyone can submit a proposal to buy this land. This article does not direct the sale of the land to A.W. Perry, but the town is aware that A.W. Perry is interested in possibly exchanging an 18-acre parcel of high value to the town for this unusable landlocked parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. This vote will require a two-thirds majority. Voting is closed, and the motion carries ninety-nine to five. Article 20 is a citizen's petition. Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Okay. We'll, Mrs. Sullivan will move the article, and then we'll ask you to speak to it. Thank you.
I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of town-owned parcels of land located off of South River Lane East and identified as Duxbury's Assessor Parcels 041-500-023, 041-500-024, 041-500-025, and 041-500-026, which were acquired by the town by judgment in tax lien case recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 26766, pages 176 through 178, and Book 26738, page 223, from the tax custodian for tax title purpose, to the Conservation Commission under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C, and to dedicate said parcels for conservation purposes in perpetuity under Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance committee voted eight-zero to recommend.
If you'd be good enough to introduce yourself to the town meeting.
I'm Christine Campbell from Plantation Drive. We just have a brief explanation of the citizen's petition. These lots have been the subject of several development attempts over the years. All of the attempts have been denied by the town due to the lot characteristics. There's four lots that we're asking to transfer on South River Lane East, and as we read in the warrant, those are the lots that are outlined. So the several development attempts over the years have been denied by the town due to the lot characteristics of high groundwater, wetlands, and an existing topography of the area which makes surface drainage very challenging. The Board of Health has disproved septic systems on these lots at least three separate times in 1985, 1996, and 2000. In the latest development attempt in 2000, the Board of Health, after reviewing the development proposals, rejected plans for the development of these lots for the following reason. The applicant has not demonstrated that the mounding of septic systems on these lots would not adversely impact the drainage in the area or in the area of the abutters. The applicant has not demonstrated that the soil conditions at the sites could support the proposed systems. These lots have been subject to a history of drainage and water damage, as well as the surrounding subdivision of Plantation Drive and South River Lane East. Abutters of these lots have appeared before the Board of Health and planning boards during various development attempts to express concern about exacerbating existing issues. Previous perk tests have revealed poor soil conditions and high ledge or refuse found in the area. In addition, these lots were subject to a lengthy litigation lawsuit brought about by the previous owner. In 2004, the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts ruled in favor of the Duxbury Board of Health and to uphold the decision to deny building on these lots. These lots were acquired by the town in 2003 in a judgment and a tax lien case. The GIS status of these lots reveal that they are subject to flood zone impacts, wetlands, and they abut an aquifer protection overlay district. So we are proposing to have these lots transferred to the Conservation Commission.
That's it? Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Sensing none, I'm gonna ask for a vote. Voting is open. It's a majority vote. I'm sorry, it is a two-thirds vote? Voting's closed, and the article carries 112 to six. Article 23 was a citizen's petition, and my understanding is the petitioner's decided to with...
Twenty-one. Twenty-one. Twenty-three, too, with twenty-one.
I'm sorry. Article 21, but I believe that petitioner's decided to indefinitely postpone the article. Is that accurate?
The article is a duplicate of Article 19, which was just, which has just passed, that the town took up for the petitioner, so this article should be, is moved to be indefinitely postponed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of indefinitely postponing this article, please, please press one. Those opposed, press two. Voting is open. There we go. Actually, voting was open, but the green light wasn't on, but now it's all caught Motion to indefinitely postpone carries 112 to two. Article 22, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift and/or eminent domain three parcels or land located off Pine Point Road, containing a total of 12.6 acres, more or less, identified as Assessor's Parcels 132-054-000, 141-043-000, and 141-044-000, described in a deed recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 2073, page 138. Said property to be acquired for and dedicated to conservation and passive recreation purposes in perpetuity and under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C.
Second.
Finance committee voted eight-zero to recommend.
Any questions or comments on the article? Sensing none, I'll ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed, and the motion carries 119 to one. Article 23, a citizen's petition authorizing abutters notice for building permits.
I move to indefinitely postpone this article after conversation with the citizen petitioner. He has asked that we indefinitely postpone so that he has some time in council to work on the language of this article for next year.
Second.
So we have a motion to indefinitely postpone this article. I'm gonna open voting and take some majority. All those in favor, press one. Voting is closed, and the motion carries 116 to five. Article 24, a citizen's petition to increase the Board of Selectmen from three to five. Is the petitioner here? Okay. Mrs. Sullivan, may we have the motion, and then we'll allow the petitioner to speak to it.
To see if the town will expand the size of the Board of Selectmen, its membership from three to five, by petitioning the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to enact special legislation for a change in the composition of the Town of Duxbury Selectmen. Said special law to be subject to an approval by the majority vote at the first town-wide general election held following its enactment.
Second.
Finance committee voted unanimously not to support this article.
If you could come down, if you could come down front and speak to the, speak to the town meeting from the front, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We had a cloud point after this, I think. It's supposed to be on a slide.
That's the, that's the, that's the motion, but we, I believe he's looking for a list That's what you got. I don't know what to tell you.
Well, I have it in my notes. If you want, I can maybe read it.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
We live in a beautiful town, Duxbury, and it's managed well by a three-member select board here. In fact, one of them, whom I consider a friend, his door has been always open to me to discuss the town problems, concerns, or professional issues, and thank you, Sean. I consider him a friend. There's a saying. It says, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." Nothing is broken here. We have a good three-select board, selectmen here. Can we make it better? That's where we are now. Here, I have 55 pages, a government study dated March 5, 2018. There are 12 pages added to this report by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Local Services. They recommend that Duxbury increase the three-member select board to five, and they give reasons. Duxbury is 16,000 people with population, $80 million budget, 3,000 students, and in Plymouth County, we do have 27 towns and cities. 52% of Plymouth County towns and cities have five selectmen. Fifty-two percent of Plymouth County towns and cities have five selectmen. Brockton has got 11 councils, and Bridgewater has got nine. The remaining towns, such as Hanson and Halifax, population 10,000, 12,000, has got three. So we are one of four towns in Plymouth County which have three selectmen. As I've said before, we have a good board here, but we can make it better. Now, the—the four towns, Hingham, Marshfield, East Bridgewater, and Duxbury, as I've said before, have got one—have got three. This article is not new. We passed this before—with—before the recommendations of the Division of Local Services, and unfortunately, because of semantics, it didn't go further. With the help of outside counsel and personally communicating—with the Division of Local Services, we added two sentences after—the membership from 3 to 5 by petitioning the General Court. Hopefully, this will be acceptable to the General Court. That's where we'll go if it's passed here, and after that, it will come before the town voters for a referendum. Now, I—I—I had a slideshow which didn't show up, but I don't want to take too much of your time, and I'll make it very brief. There are 12 good reasons why we should go to five selectmen. One, five-member board offers broader representative of viewpoints. Two, five-member board enhances problem solving. Three, five-member board enables more research and analysis. Five, five-member board reduces the open meeting load violations. Five, five-member board reduces the conflict of interest. Seven, with five-member board, two selectmen may legally speak with one another but cannot deliberate. Eight, with five members, five selectmen, there's a greater availability to attend meetings of other committees' meetings to arrive at important decisions. Nine, with five selectmen winning three votes versus two is more difficult, greater collaboration is achieved. Ten, with no more than two members elected each year, the board will experience greater stability and continuity. Eleven, should the board member fall ill or become otherwise unable to perform his or her duties, the town can continue to achieve quorum and operate effectively in the best interest of its residents. The last, but not the least, with five-member board, the town meetings—the town members will have greater access to the board. We do have access. We have—as I've said before many times, we do have a good board, but the whole idea was to make it better. And that's where I stand before you. I appreciate if you vote for this, to see where we're going from this. Let's take the next step. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
I appreciate your help, and thank you, Betsy, for motioning it.
Kathleen will speak for the Finance Committee.
Good evening, Kathleen Glenn. Not only Finance Committee, but Government Study Committee as well, for three happy years, with my friend over here, Alex Jen. Thank you for the petitioner, for bringing out all of those points, and all of those points actually were deliberated for long and hard to talk about, you know, the 3 to 5, the increase from three Board of Selectmen to 5. Kind of like a counterpoint is what I'm trying to get out here. Some of our discussion about increasing the number of the board members was meetings would be longer and less efficient. And I should also point out that the Division of Local Services really works on a numbers game, right? So they're talking about statistics. They're not talking about coming into the town and really kind of digging into who we are as a town. They look at like, okay, you know, Brockton is, you know, 30,000 or 11,000, or whatever the number is, they should have, you know, X amount of representatives based on their population. It really doesn't delve into, you know, who we are as a town and how we govern ourselves. So there is that point that I wanted to bring out, first of all, but I also want to talk about—the Board of Selectmen here, a number of years ago, chose to bring in a professional management team, as in our Finance Director, our Town Manager, Jeannie Horn, our Human Resources Director, and this has lifted the burden greatly over the Board of Selectmen, who would, you know, normally—or in the past, would have taken on these responsibilities, frees them up to do the oversight, which is so important to the town. So that's kind of one of the positions we took at Government Study, and also as we discussed it in the Finance Committee. Concerning the transparency issue and the quorum, that has never been an issue to date. As a matter of fact, it has never been an issue as far as, you know, any kind of conflicts of interest, so again, to the petitioner's concerns. Essentially, the—to—again, the petitioner's concern, you know, if it's not broken, don't fix it. This has been brought up in two previous town meetings, and both of the articles failed. Again, you know, it's—it's a question of looking at all of the points that the petitioner brought brought up here this evening, and going with the Government Study Committee as well as the Finance Committee, kind of doing the counterpoints against it, and we voted to remain in three councils—or three Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to—I'm going to recognize Mr. Ted Flynn, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, and then we'll open it up to general discussion.
My comments will be brief. I look at this as a solution in search of a problem. We don't have a problem here. We've had a very effective board with three people, and as Kathleen pointed out, the Division of Local Services collects statistics. They don't collect anything about the quality of the town, how well the town is run, how it's professionally run. In terms of research by members of the board, that's why we have a $79 million budget and a professional staff of Town Manager, Finance Director, Human Resources Director, because we don't have to do those things. Our job is to oversee the Town Manager. And so I really do think—I have to let you know, too, that the Board of Selectmen voted 3 to 0, not in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. We have—we have a speaker down front. I've got somebody—Mr. Martikini in the back has been waiting, and then—and then
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Mary J. Noel, and I live at 59 Trout Farm Lane. I am in favor of Article 24 to increase the Board of Selectmen from 3 to 5 members. As I listened to this debate, I thought back to the years 1980 to 1986, when I was serving on the Duxbury School Committee, which, as you know, is a five-member board. During these years, I remember how different members brought different talents and different life experiences to the deliberations. As a result, there was a broader range of concerns and viewpoints than if there had only been three. I tried to imagine which two members could have been eliminated without sacrificing the effectiveness of the committee. I couldn't envision it. Even though at times, we had healthy tension, split votes, and different priorities amongst each other, each member played a vital and fruitful role. One of the reasons against the expansion, as stated in the Duxbury Clipper, is that we have a Town Manager, and the selectmen are not involved in the running of the town. I would like to read a few lines from the Duxbury Town Committee, Government Committee, that was just referred to by the other previous speakers. They talk about, "In addition to the statutory responsibilities, selectmen participate on ad hoc committees, research and act upon all town meeting issues, supervise the Town Manager, review capital and operating budgets, and enact local policy decisions." Yes, we have a lot of very efficient administrators in our town, but the accountability that the selectmen have to keep overseeing all these administrators takes time. Some of the responses from the Study Committee, as I read from the report, say, "Opponents of a larger select board argue that towns are starved for candidates to run for office, and increasing the board size will call seats to either go unfulfilled or be filled by residents with personal agendas." They further contend that the need to share the workload has diminished—I have—my eyes are getting bad—has diminished since professional managers actually run the day-to-day operations, and that's—that's understandable. Lastly, they insist that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. That, to me, says it's good enough. I would just like to say that similarly, the Duxbury School Committee has a superintendent that runs the day-to-day operation of the school department. Nonetheless, I doubt you could find many school committee members, past or present, who think the job could be done just as well with five members—with less than five members. Another quote in the Clipper stated, "The committee could not identify a substantial existing problem that would be addressed by increasing the number of selectmen," end of quote. Currently, we have several substantial existing problems facing the selectmen. But how do you know that having a board with five instead of three, bringing broader experience and skills, might not be beneficial? How do we know that? Perhaps you are suggesting that more feedback, more what-ifs, and more discussion will only be more time-consuming. I would suggest that five instead of three would make it more democratic. If we do not expand this board at this time, I worry that the perception will be that it is an exclusive body that does not want to share its power. As opposed to the message I believe we should be sending, which is whether you're young or old, female or male, richer or poorer, longtime resident or newcomer, we welcome you and we need your public service. Diversity of thought and perspective can inspire bolder thinking. The process for implementing this change does not happen overnight. It could easily take up to two years. It would require approval of a vote by this town meeting, passage of a special act of the Mass. State Legislature, placement on the ballot at the next town election, and, if approved, waiting for the next town election to add two candidates. Most of us may be very happy with Ted and David and Sean, their performance on the Board of Selectmen, but they are not going to be here forever. We need to think long-term. Duxbury has grown and is growing. Our main governing body, the Board of Selectmen, needs to grow with it. In conclusion, I am suggesting that broader representation, diversity, inclusiveness, more effective governance, and planning for the future would make a five-member Board of Selectmen a needed change. I ask you to support this article and vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Martikini in the back, Mr. Lampert, you'll be next, and then there's a gentleman behind Mr. Martikini that will follow up.
I'm the Selectman for 12 years, serving this town, so I—I think I have a pretty good handle on how the selectmen operate, how the town operates. And I've served on a lot of different boards, let me tell you. Probably 50 different boards, and between Duxbury and other local South Shore issues. And I've seen a lot of the dynamics of how boards operate. Our own planning board, which I served on, has seven people. The—the School Committee has five. I wasn't on the School Committee. And our selectmen have three. I consider Duxbury and Hingham two of the best-run towns on the South Shore. Both of them have three-member boards. My experience is that when you get more people on a board, the dynamics change in such a way that you typically have one or two people who will dominate a board when you have a larger board. When you have a three-person board, you—you tend to have more equal discussion. So I think from a dynamic point of view, I think—I believe very strongly that a three-member board is a far superior form of government than expanding to five. One of the things that I, as a Selectman, spent a lot of time with our Town Manager, Rocco Longo and Richard McDonald at the time, and they spent a lot of time with me, especially in the beginning, when I didn't know what was going on. Let me tell you, I—I was a newbie to town, to town-meeting form of government, and—for me, it was an extra-long learning curve. And so the staff spent a lot of time with me. I do worry very much that if the staff has to now spend—you know, if—if they're going to try and do the same level of service that they spent with me, and I know that they spend with the current selectmen, I do worry that our staff, which is already stretched pretty thin, doing all kinds of jobs, that trying to keep up with five people is a lot more difficult for them. There could be salary implications, you know. The current board, right now, does not take any salary or insurance, does not mean that they are able to take it. they are able to take it. It's not much, but again, it could have a financial impact. Again, I don't see the need for it. So I really believe that, I think we have the right approach to town government. It's, you know, when you think about the United States, we have a president, one person, who is formed with so much power. It's by design that you don't want a committee necessarily running, you know, a large institution. So I think we have a smaller group that I think is very efficient, and I would urge you not to support this.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert. And then Mr. Cook, I believe, and woman in the back. Thank you very much.
Jim Lepper, 148 Washington Street. I wanted to advert to one thing that Wyokta mentioned a couple of times in his presentation of the 12 points. That's our friend, and I put that in quotes, the open meeting law. The open meeting law, most of you probably know, says that except in a posted meeting, a majority of a board cannot discuss anything of substance. What does that mean as a practical matter? When I was chairing the board, zoning board of appeals, had it been a three-person board, it would have meant that I could not talk to any other member to sound them out, to get views on anything. I'm now a member of the fiscal advisory committee, it would mean that I could not talk to the chair about issues that were coming up, that we might want to think about and talk about. I am sure that Betsy and Frank need to talk to each other. But the way that this open meeting law works, and I frankly think it is a detriment in many ways to the way the government should be run, means that Sean can't talk to Dave, Ted can't talk to anybody, except at a posted meeting. That strikes me as an extremely inefficient way to run something and to have the members of a board really be able to consider matters that are coming before them. There are advantages to a three-member board, but I think one of the advantages of getting to a larger board is you can have a couple of board members talk to each other about problems, to get other points of view, and think it through before you get into that Monday night meeting where you have a jammed agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Brian Cook. I live at 105 St. George Street. I'm an attorney. I do a lot of municipal work. I represent other towns and appear at boards around the state. The issue here may be that Duxbury may be a one-street-light town, but we are no longer a one-horse town. I see in towns that have three selectmen across the state, an attempt to make the town manager into the mayor. And as I watch this progression and this change in our town, I am extremely thankful to our three-person Board of Selectmen for the amount of work they do, but I have trouble believing that there's any negative in having more voices, more opinions, and more people on a board supporting a town with the issues that Duxbury currently faces. We talked a little bit about finances, and I think if you look at some of the 10% to 30% raises that were given to a group of people who report to one person, we can see some of the issues and some of the money that could be saved by having more people involved in these decisions. I know there is a desire on the national level right now to have less democracy rather than more democracy, but I would ask the people in this room tonight to vote in favor of this article, because Duxbury should be a place that was the birth of democracy. We should look for more democracy rather than less. As a final comment, and I hope this doesn't scare anyone, but there is an issue, if we create five spots, will we have two empty? So I'm here tonight to declare that I'm going to run for one of them, and then we only have to find one other person to fill a spot. I thank you.
Thank you. And I'm, woman in--
My turn?
Yes, on my right, and then you, sir.
Hi, Eve Penoyer, 59, Tussock Brook Road. I'm going to respectfully disagree with Mr. Martikini, because I've served on boards large and small, and I don't agree with his comments on the dynamics. In fact, quite the opposite. I think the smaller the board, the more likely it is that a leader emerge, and when there is a larger group, it becomes more democratic. So I'm going to disagree with that comment. I am very much in favor of a five-member board, primarily for breadth of experience, diversity of viewpoints, and like the last speaker, I'm standing up to speak, because you don't have to worry about filling that fifth spot. I'll take it. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen in the back.
Paul McCormick, Partridge Road. I'm in favor of going to five. I was the idiot who brought the citizen petition that got crushed in 2010, after the town meeting had voted to approve for five, going from five to three back in 2006. Individually, the three selectmen have done a commendable job. Collectively, the board has been a disappointment. They are too reactionary and are not proactive enough. For example, on Saturday, the seawall proponents explained that the town had received a million-dollar grant. Great. They also explained that towns north of us, Marshfield and Situate, had been receiving these grants for a number of years. A $12 million sum was mentioned. We are a coastal community. Changes are occurring. Where's the leadership? I don't see it. During the past 12 years, there have been two selectmen who were basically single-issue candidates. They got elected, their issues got resolved or not, and they basically checked out. They continued to vote the issues that came up, one-day liquor licenses, et cetera, but no leadership, nothing extra. Basically, they were a waste of space. I mean, that's what happens when you have a three-person board and one no longer is involved. Finally, this is just something about the town. The annual town report lists 41 boards and commissions, elected and appointed. Of the 41, only four have three members. Thirty-seven have five or more. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Adams, did you want to speak? Yes, please. You were inching your way up for quite some time, and I think I was ignoring you. And then the gentleman in the upper left-hand corner, my left. Thank you.
Julia Adams, 22 Bay Farm Road. I'd like to speak, I was on the, I'm also a member of the school committee. I was on the government study committee that produced the report last year to town meeting. And as Mrs. Noel mentioned, we voted unanimously to retain the current structure of three selectmen. And we really arrived at that decision, because we couldn't identify a substantial existing problem that would have been addressed by having five, as opposed to three, selectmen. Which isn't to say that the arguments that have been presented so far have no validity. There are arguments to be made for five selectmen, but I find it hard to believe that it's a problem. It seemed to us, and it seemed to me personally, that the problem about representation in Duxbury is twofold. One is that there's low voter turnout at town meeting and at local elections, and that there's a low level of volunteerism. And so my question is to you and to everyone, is to ask whether, by expanding the Board of Selectmen, you're really addressing the issue of the representativeness of Duxbury's town government. If we don't have more people volunteering, if we don't have more people voting, then we will still have the same, say, 1,200, 1,500 people who vote in town elections, the same 200 people who show up at town meeting, and the representativeness of the board, whether it's three or five, you'll be representing the same number of people. So I think that it's an issue to consider, if you vote in favor of this change to the selectmen, are you really achieving what your objective is? And I would challenge you to say, "No, I don't think you are," and that more steps should be taken to understand why it is people don't participate, either by voting or by volunteering, and what can be done to encourage more participation, because that will bring you the diversity and the breadth of opinion that you aim for. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll recognize the gentleman in the upper left-hand corner, and then Mrs. McNabb.
Thomas Knee, 590 Bay Road. I came here with no opinion on this article. I've heard some good arguments for it and some against. I think it would be a shame if the 120 or so voters here tonight were to shoot this down. I'd like to digest this a little more. I think the entire town deserves the right to digest this and think about this and have a town vote in a year from now. So I'm going to vote yes for this.
Mrs. McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think it's unfortunate that we get personal about this. I think that the three members, the current members of the Board of Selectmen, have done a good job. I think they do their best, they show up. You may not always agree with their positions or such, but I think that it's unfortunate that we personally attack them. I think that what we need to do is look outside of the personalities, and isn't it better to increase the diversity of the people that represent our town, to give, as Mrs. Noel said, you know, more opportunity for people of every walk of life in this town? Let's get some more opinions and more diversity and more folks involved. I think it's a good idea, and I also know that in the last several surveys that have gone out, the town has overwhelmingly supported the five-member board. So I think that this is long overdue, and let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have something new to add here?
I do have one.
We have one more comment in the back, I think, and then perhaps we're easing up on a vote.
Would just like to agree with the speaker before Mrs. McNabb. We here in this room are an extremely small percentage of this town. This is a very important question of the nature of our governance. We're not going to make a five-member board tonight. We're going to decide that it could go forward to ballot. I feel that town meeting owes it to the citizens of Duxbury to put it to the ballot. Thank you.
Are we ready for a vote?
Sheila Lynch Benton, West Street. Is this on? Yeah. I would like to congratulate the three volunteers on the selectmen who put in time, their own effort, and why people don't want to run for committees is what happens, personal attack. And I think that's totally uncalled for, and I'd like to congratulate the three volunteers.
If I could, we're going to, town, I'm sorry, it's better. If I could, we're going to have town council has a few remarks he'd like to make about the process. So if you could--
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jeff Blake, and as he just said, I'm a town council, and good evening, everyone, and thank you guys for having me. I just wanted to let you know, because I have heard in the room that you believe that you are voting on something that would require a Board of Selectmen to petition, or somebody to petition, presumably the Board of Selectmen, to petition the general court. And in my opinion, this article, as drafted, is what we call directory and not mandatory. It would be a sentence of the meeting. In other words, the legislative body, you, cannot force the executive, the Board of Selectmen, to file a petition with the general court. You can certainly get up here, like you have, and provide your opinion, your feelings, and your direction as to how you want this town to go. But even if this is approved here tonight, and I'm pointing to the motion that was just made, in my opinion, it would not force the Board of Selectmen or anyone to petition the general court. That would have to come through what is known as a petition, which is in a different form than this, and it would have to be approved at another town meeting, as we pointed out in a year, and then it would go to the general court. So this is what we call directory and not mandatory, very similar to what you'll be asked to vote on at the very end here, the decommissioning of the Plymouth Nuclear Power
Well, that has certainly quieted the room. Before we start, the petitioner has, would like to speak. I'll recognize him. Mrs. McNabb was quick to the microphone. I'll go to her, and then I'll catch up with you. If you'd like to wander on down front and get a seat for all of this, that's fine.
Mr. Moderator--
Sir.
In the past years, whenever citizens had to petition, the town council was available. This time, the town council was invisible to us, and the citizens' petition did not come before the town council. But unfortunately, what you see as statement on the board has been prepared by outside council, and is acceptable to the general court, as well as it directs the town to petition, petition the general--
Mrs. McNabb, can I ask you to wait just one second? Mr. Reed has a comment he wants to make about the availability of town council, then we'll recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to clarify something that I think is worthy of it, town council has not been invisible to the process. In fact, what happened in this case, as was the case with the previous article that was IP'd, is they were dropped off to the town clerk's office before we had the opportunity to review them with town council. So once the citizens' petitions are delivered to her, the proposed article is basically set in stone. What we encourage people to do, and have done in the past, in fact, one of the members of the finance committee did the same with me, probably three, four years ago, with another citizens' petition, is we try to craft them so that they are perfected before they get in the warrant, so that you don't need to have motions. But no, town council has always been available. In fact, that's been the practice in the five years I've been here, which is an unusual move, because it's a departure from what you see in most of the other communities, and certainly any of the communities I've ever worked in. Very rarely does town council become involved in the crafting of a citizens' petition. Usually, the citizens' petition is dropped off at the clerk's office, and it rests on its face, and it lives on its own merits. But in this community, the board made a decision a long time ago to try and work with citizens who want to make a citizens' petition, and what they do is they come to our office, we provide the council, and then we provide access to town council to make sure that the warrant article is as perfected as it can be. In this case, and again, in the previous case, that was not the case, but with respect to the previous article that was IP'd, that article's going to come back, because we're going to follow that exact process. In fact, the proponent's going to come in and meet with me over the course of the summer. We're going to get the article squared away, and then let you folks decide how you may. But town council has always been present regarding the availability to help citizens draft petitions.
All right. Mrs. McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think this is a most unfortunate turn of events here. I think you have a group of people in this town that have come out for perhaps this article and feel strongly, and if, in fact, it passes, I believe that it should move forward. And I think that this can be easily remedied by asking the Board of Selectmen, all three of which are here, that to address town meeting and let us know that in the event that this article passes here tonight, that you would be willing to petition the court, as is the desire of this town meeting. Could the selectmen agree to that, or is that something that they will not agree to?
All right. If the board chooses to respond, they can, although that question is somewhat outside the article that's before the town meeting. Do you wish to respond at this point? Be my guest.
I don't mind responding. If town meeting pass--
If town meeting passes it, we will move forward as best we can with all speed and within the legal limits of our authority.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I would agree with that as well. I would definitely want to spend some time. We're not in session right now, so obviously, we can't debate this amongst ourselves. I mean, we weren't thinking of this even being an issue, but I would also want to consult with Town Council to make sure we were doing it properly and it was going to be done so that it wouldn't get kicked back later on.
I previously recognized somebody else to speak, although I think maybe we're starting to be a little repetitive and I'm not sure how many minds are being changed at this point in time.
I would just like to say, I was going to say that I couldn't imagine if this town meeting approved this, that the Selectmen would defy that vote. And I'm delighted and really not surprised to see that they've been so gracious. I would like to ask Town Council, first of all, I'm so pleased to hear Town Council. I was here all day Saturday and never heard you speak. But I would just like to clarify this. Hopefully, it will clarify it for everyone. Are you saying that if this town meeting voted for this article, the Selectmen could not submit it to Mass. State Legislature? And on what grounds would that be?
Jeff, I wonder, could I just hang on just one second? If you could speak into a microphone with your response or Town Council?
Well, you can.
Come on down front. I think you can share. You'll be nice. Let's play nice. And I say that because people who will watch this tape can't hear a word that you say if you don't speak into a microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And again, through you, Mr. Moderator, I'm Jeff Blake. And your question was, if this town meeting here tonight approved this article, could the Board of Selectmen not go forward that? And my answer is yes, and that's what I mean by it being directory and not mandatory. It's a direction the town wants to take, but legally, the board does not have to follow that, but it sounds to me like it's academic because they said they would.
Right. Now, my next question is, as far as the language in this article, I understand one of the vote that we had in previous years was rejected once it got to the Mass. State Legislature because of the language? Well, for some procedural reason. So, is the language in this article appropriate to go forward?
In my opinion, it's not.
It's not?
No. And if the board would like, again, through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, please respond to the question.
Take that out of order, but in my opinion, it is not. We have a form and so does the special, the court, so does the General Court, and we've done many, many hundreds of thousands of these and we would put it in our form. But I don't believe, in my opinion, it is sufficient right now to go forward.
Okay. And as I understand it, we do, when asked, help make the language correct for articles when it's a citizen article?
Please.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. That is the practice of this town. I will tell you, the town manager was 100% correct in when he said it's one of the few towns that allows a citizen to have access to Town Council in drafting a citizens' petition.
So, my next question is, is there any reason why this language cannot be made appropriate before it goes to the Mass. State Legislature? Can we do that? Will we do that?
There's no reason why we couldn't draft that and make it work as long as the Board of Selectmen wants to.
Thank you very much.
Are we ready for a vote now? Yes, okay. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of this, please press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is open.
Trying to wake me up?
Voting is closed and the motion carries 108 to 52. Mrs. Sullivan, Article 25, please.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws, Section 609.3 procedures with text to be inserted, shown in bold, underline such markings for illustrative purposes only as printed in the warrant.
Second.
We have a report of the Planning Board before we get an explanation.
Article 25 to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 609.3, demolition of historically significant buildings. After a public hearing held on January 9th, 2019, and continued to January 30th, 2019, and closed on that date, the Planning Board voted 6 to 0 to support the article.
Thank you. Is our Planning Director going to address the article and explain what's going on?
Yes, I asked my trusty assistant, Ashkey, to do it, but he refused. This article is with respect to demolition delay in the zoning bylaw. And if you'll recall, last year's town meeting, there was discussion of this article with respect to adding language that would limit a demolition delay permit, decision having been issued for two years. It would be limited for two years. And then also that the decision would carry with the land rather than with the owner. It was withdrawn by the Historical Commission at town meeting. The Planning Board has sponsored the article this year and that is our recommendation.
We have a question in the back? Can't hear you.
Hello?
There we go.
John Truelow Partridge wrote, "Clarification." And it indicates the permit expires two years from the date of determination. And the date of determination, as I understand it, could be as much as a year prior to the demolition permit, which therefore, you only have one year from receipt of the demolition permit to complete the demolition. Is that correct?
Let me, so the process is that if a building is 75 years or older, the building commissioner, depending on the type of work being done, would make a recommendation and referral to the Historical Commission, who would then determine whether or not the property is significant as in the bylaw. If they determine that it is, and then they decide the decision to impose a demolition delay, the date of that decision being noticed to the Building Department is when that starts. And then two years from that would be when it would expire.
So, if there was a one-year delay before issuing the demolition permit, you would then only have one year, not two years, to finish the demolition?
I don't understand your conclusion. There would not be a year in advance.
Well, you make the determination, then you impose a one-year waiting period.
No. The town meeting, the zoning bylaw has a six-month demolition delay, which is imposed at the time that the decision is referred to the Building Commissioner.
I understand that if Article 26 passes, it would be a one, could be as much as a one-year delay.
That's a different article and a different question.
I understand, but the point I'm trying to make is you're only giving those of us who own old homes, one year to finish the demolition and not two, the way it's worded.
I disagree. Once the decision is made and it's issued to the Building Commissioner, the Building Commissioner issues a demolition permit after six months. So, it's only six months from the date of that decision.
Which would be, but what, then, a year and a half?
And then that gives you two years from the date of that decision being, that permit being issued to finish the work.
I disagree with the wording. I think it's, when you say the expiration of, the date of the determination is not the date the demolition permit is issued. The demolition permit is issued a year from the date of determination.
It is not issued a year from the date of the determination.
Or six months, depending on how Article 26 goes.
Yes, it would be six months from, because that's the intent of the delay.
So, you can't start for six months?
If a delay is imposed, that's correct.
Right, and then you'd have to be finishing a year and a half, then.
Then after the delay is expired, that is when the Building Commissioner issues the demo permit.
Right.
And then it's two years from that date.
But that's not what reads. It says, "Two years from the date of determination," not "Two years from the date the demolition permit is issued." That's the point I'm trying to make.
Okay.
So, perhaps you need to reword it.
Would you care to make a motion?
I'll leave that to you.
Okay. Let's see. A decision by the commission is transferable to another party. However, it expires two years from the date of determination. The decision expires two years from the date. It doesn't affect the demolition permit. So, we're not, we're not, I see what you're saying, that's a, I need time. Can we move on to a different article and let me take some time to ponder this because you would end up changing all of this to, it's transferable to another party, period? It's the same language in the next one. Yep. If demolition has not occurred prior to the expiration of the
I was going to
Of two years from the date a demolition permit is issued?
Maybe just three years from the date of determination would be the easiest amendment.
That extends it by six months. I'm not sure you want to do that.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of that.
If demolition has not occurred prior to the expiration of two years from the issuance Date of issuance. Of the demo permit.
Right.
A new application for a demolition permit must be filed prior to any subsequent demolition.
May I be recognized?
Yes, please. I'm sorry.
Eve Penoyer, 59 Tussam Brook Road. I draft legislation, so I'm going to offer the amendment that I think will fix this before I give you the language, though I just want to point out, in the Planning Board's own explanation, they're talking about the transferability of the permit, and I do think that that's what you intend. There's a permit that's going to be issued and then if there's a sale
It's not actually.
Well, is the permit issued and held in abeyance or is the permit not issued until the delay has expired?
The intent is that the decision made by the Historical Commission is effective no matter whom owns the property, whether or not a demolition permit has been pulled by the current owner or it transfers hands and a new owner acquires the property and then pulls a demo permit. So, it's not, it's not clear that we're tackling this.
And if I may ask, the delay itself, the six months or if it's amended to be a year tonight, on what date does that period begin to run? Does it run upon, from application or does it run from determination?
From determination.
So, we went down the same rabbit hole on Finance Committee for this and the next article. And the intent was that if somebody had filed an application to do some demolition on their property and then transferred the property, the permit would expire.
Yes.
So, if you issue a permit, you can't issue, the permit's not transferring, it's their ability to pull the permit that is transferring. Because if you don't own the house, you don't pull the permit, right? So, the permit is, it was my understanding and our understanding in our conversation, the permits were issued to the individual of record that owned the property. So, if indeed the house was sold during this two-year period, it's moot. And the intent of this was that if somebody had gone through all of this and worked through all of this with the idea that this home was going to need renovation and then they were going to sell the property, that that work would not go to waste, the clock would not be reset. So, therefore, the choice of the word determination, although a little screwy, was very purposeful because it was for that, the ability for the, for all the work that had been done not to die with the sale of the home. So, determination is absolutely the word that they wanted. And I get John's point because I was, you know, losing my mind on this as well, but that was the reason that they did it, so that if somebody had gotten plans for their house and then decided to sell it, that the plans would not go for naught and that they could then be transferred to the new owner. You can't have everything.
Right. I'm very much in favor of the purpose of doing this, that so people can have certainty so that they can plan for the sale of their property and get the ball rolling on this issue, which affects a lot of homes in our town. However, I'm not quite sure you've covered all the possibilities here because you've got two potential times that that transfer could happen. It could happen after the determination is made but before the demolition permit is issued, or it could happen after the permit is issued but before the structure is demolished. In fact, if I were buying a property, I had that intent as the purchaser, I might make the issuance of the permit for demolition a condition of my closing. So, I'm not sure if this covers all the potential situations that might come up and perhaps needs to be expanded to more fully carry out its intent.
I can only tell you why we, what was our understanding and why we felt the language was, represented the intent of this particular article, not anything else, not expanding it or contracting it, but that language represented the intent.
Your purpose, your purpose here is to allow people to seek the demolition of structures that they intend to sell, but there's all kinds, there's various times that the transfer could happen, is what I'm saying, and this is only covering one situation. Is it clear under our building permit rules that once issued a, I mean, perhaps it's already clear that once issued, if a demolition permit is issued, is it automatically transferable regardless of this article?
No, it was not. That was the point.
Okay, but it needs to be made so in order to fully cover this issue for sellers.
That would be you.
Scott Cassagrande, Chairman of the Planning Board. Part of the reason the determination is being used, not the permit, and I could try to run through some of the scenarios that you were just talking about. The determination is made by the commission and then it could be transferable to a new owner, i.e., the current owner doesn't have to actually put the demolition permit in place, they can let the new owner go down for the permit. If the current owner goes down and pulls the demolition permit, which they got a determination that they could do it, and then they sell the property, their permit is no good to them anymore. So, the new owner goes down, there's already determination on the property which is transferable, the new owner goes down and pulls a new permit for the demolition, the same as the prior owner might have done. With regard to the timeframes on when it would run out, if a determination, obviously, we all know if a determination was made that it's okay to take down the house, nobody worries about the times. If we go to, if we maintain a six-month delay and don't do the 12-month delay, the determination, if on my property or anybody's property, was determined that there was going to be either a six-month or a 12-month delay on the property that I want to pull a building permit to, a demolition permit on, then yes, I would be waiting either six months or 12 months, using up some of my time to do my demolition. However, keep this in mind, if I've applied for a demolition permit on a house that I own and I intend to take that down, that doesn't stop you from any of the rest of your planning so that on the day after the six months, you go down, pull your permit and the contractor shows up the very next day, you're still doing all of your plans, you're doing everything else. Remember, your demolition delay is just simply a delay. It isn't a whole bunch of other things that can, that'd be happening to your house. So, in the case where So, in the case where a delay is enacted, you would be losing some of your potential to your timeframe at that point on getting your actual demolition started. You don't have to complete your demolition. You go down and you apply for your permit and you get started at that point.
I would just like to point out though that, in the case of the sale, the sale, that a good, a good percentage of the time, it's not gonna be possible to demolish the house, you know, before the transfer because somebody's still living in it. And the demolition is gonna happen after the transfer, which argues in favor of simply allowing the demolition permit to be transferable itself, in addition to the determination being transferable. That's all.
I don't believe a building permit can be given to someone else, so that's not something we can put into the zoning.
Disagree on that, ma'am, because I've, have a building permit that was transferred to me by the building department. So building permits can be, I don't know if demolition permits can be.
Can Town Council address that?
Jim's having a hard time.
Building Commissioner's coming up.
Mr. Lambiace, our Director of Inspection Services?
Good evening, Scott Lambiace, Director of Municipal Services, also your Building Commissioner. Yes, and absolutely, a building permit is transferable. A, demolition permit is essentially a building permit to demolish a building. And again, it is a transferable permit.
Yeah, we've cleared up, we've actually cleared something up. There was a gentleman who stood very patiently at the back microphone as we engaged in this. If he's still interested in speaking, I'll recognize him. There we go.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Robert Tiger Carpenter, Summer Street, and proponent of the article last year, and I haven't intended to make any remarks this evening. I think that, on the face of it, it's good work. I've been at this issue for five to seven years, and the bylaw is interpreted as many things to many people, but fundamentally is a statement of public policy, and the town is able to do such things at will. I think, I'd like to point out that the process works very well, and that this took a few years, we can enact it now and work with it for a year or two, and if necessary, change it. It's actually not that difficult. I recommend that we go forward with the language as provided by the Planning Board in support of their work as diligent public servants. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna recognize Mr. Lampard first, he was down here waiting to speak, and then Mrs. McNabb in the back.
Jim Lampard, 148 Washington Street. And as I mentioned before, I spent a number of years on the zoning board. One thing that I think is very easy to confuse around here is the difference between the determination and the, and an actual permit to demolish. What the determination does is if the historical commission decides that, yes, this is an historic property and we don't want you to tear it down now, is it tells Scott that he has to wait a period of time before he can issue a permit that permits its demolition. What we're basically talking about in this article is if I have received the determination that I can tear down my house, that lives, so Scott can issue the permit, and he can, he has ongoing authority to issue the permit. If they've decided that I have to wait six months, and I've waited out my six months, Scott again has the authority to issue a permit. Once he has issued that permit, my understanding is, it's now out of the hands of the historical commission. The permit to demolish has been properly issued, and as Scott told you, that is clearly transferable to a new owner. But you have to keep in mind the difference between Scott's permit that says, "Okay, now you can bring in your wrecking ball," and the historical commission determination that you're gonna have to wait some period of time before you can get that permit. But they're two quite different things.
Thank you. Mrs. McNabb, and then Mr. Dowling up front.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a general comment, is I believe this article and the next are somehow somewhat intertwined in a way, and as well as all of our zoning bylaws that play together. I caution Town Meeting to make amendments on the floor. If we're, if the language in this article doesn't have the intended timeframes, and we start making off-the-cuff amendments right here, it could have unintended consequences to not, to not only that article, but the next one and other areas of the bylaw. So I'm just cautioning us, if we aren't comfortable with this, I would say, "I pee it, bring it back again," but amendments on Town Meeting floor when it comes to zoning, it's late on a Monday night and this stuff is dicey. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dowling.
I don't want to make this any more complicated than it already is. I, I mean, I agree with the sense of the article. The issue is, and Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, Scott cannot issue a demolition permit, which is a building permit, until the house is vacant, all the utilities have been disconnected, and nobody's living there. That's the only time that he can issue it. He can't issue it before that. So you can't just go to the historic commission, get a vote, and then go pull a permit. You have to vacate the house, disconnect all the utilities, that's when you can get a permit.
Up, we have somebody in the back, yes. Thank you.
I'd just like to point, Sheila Lynch-Benton, West Street.
Thank you.
I'd like to point out, last year, there was a lot of confusion on the amendments, and I noticed it was used as a strategy to gut the amendment, confuse and obfuscate, I think is the word, the amendment. I think that strategy is being used again tonight, and the Planning Board worked for months on the language. It's gone through many committees, and I hope that we don't change it on the floor. And I hope the strategy to confuse everyone to delay it doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready? One more person up here, and then I'm gonna see if we're ready for a vote.
Hi, Jessica Williams, Tremont Street. I have a question.
We'll see if we can get you an answer.
Okay, I was wondering if the Historic Commission has voted to approve this article? Because it seems to me it's a counter to their typical interest in not letting houses be demolished, and this would be a transfer of ability. Does the Historic Commission have an opinion on this?
Does anybody have an answer? Is the Historic Commission here? We, yes. And the answer is?
RT Carpenter, Summer Street. Yes, the Historic Commission voted in favor.
You voted, Historic Commission voted in favor of this article? Okay. We ready for a vote now?
Yes.
Okay. This is a, this is a zoning bylaw, it's gonna take a two-thirds vote for it to pass. Voting is now open, it is one for yes, two for no. Voting is closed and the, and the article passes 125 to 30. Article number 26, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the Town amend the zoning bylaws, Section 609.3, procedures with text to be inserted as shown in bold, underline and text to be deleted shown in strike-through, such markings for illustrative purposes only, and to further correct a typographical error by changing "of" to "or" in Paragraph A as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee voted one in favor and seven against this article, so we will be having two members, one member to do a minority opinion and one to speak for the other members of the committee. Thank you.
First, we'll hear from the Clerk of the Planning Board.
Yep. Article 26 to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 609.3, demolition of historically significant buildings. After a public hearing held on January 9th, 2019, and continued to January 30th, 2019, and closed on that date, the Planning Board voted six to zero to support the article.
Mr. Moderator, a point of order?
Mr. Lampard.
A point of order, there are several changes, portions to this article, and I would point out that one of them is simply a correction of a typographical error, changing less to more, which doesn't seem to have much of a substantive effect. The rest of it is substantive, and I wondered as a matter of procedure if it's possible to take two votes, to split it between the substantive 12-month and the question of this typographical, which basically is, now stands, the article says they can't do anything for a period of time, as opposed to having to do something by a period of time, which I think everyone has recognized is a typical error that just simply shouldn't be there.
If I may address that, the Planning Board would entertain splitting that. In addition to the "more" versus "less" that Mr. Lampard pointed out, there is one additional item, which is adding the language within 45 days, which is simply seeking that we have the meeting with the applicant within 45 days of the imposition of a decision to delay.
I see no reason why we can't divide the question. And so I guess I'm, if you have, if you have a warrant, we're looking at, we're looking at page 53, if that, if that helps people to follow along. So, Mr. Lampard, I understand, as I believe you're looking...
Let me get the mic. I was basically looking at the third paragraph up from the bottom where "less" gets changed to "more," which is a pure typographical, and for the purpose of dividing the issue, I think the major issue here substantively is going to be the six months versus 12 months, and I would have no problem at all on following Valerie's suggestion that basically we take what looked like the non-substantive ones, at least relatively speaking, the "less" more and the 45 days, and split it that way.
That's where?
We are changing from, "They can't do anything..." They can't do anything for 10 days to "They have to do something within 10 days." So it says, we'll say that "no more than 10 days after they must do something," as opposed to "not less than 10 days after."
The issue that Mr. Lampard is pointing out is some, the question of "no less" versus "more" is something that Town Meeting has agreed for years, as has the, everyone reading this article, was adopted in error when it was originally adopted, and it is a typo. It should always have read "no more than 10 business days." And so it's not a substantive issue because we've all discussed this several times, it should have been "no more than."
So as, as we were talking amongst ourselves up here, if you look at page 54, Item A, it turns out that it reads, "The commission is satisfied that there is no reasonable likelihood that either the owner of some other person," and that should read "the owner or some other person."
And that's in the motion?
It's just not marked. It's, it's just not...
The warrant was printed, and so we captured it in the motion.
Yeah, it wasn't captured in the warrant. I guess as I'm standing here, I'm not, I'm not clear whether "less" or "more" is typographical or, or, it seems to me that is, that we're making a change in, in the language itself as opposed to an "of," an "of" or, an "of" or...
Mr. Moderator, may I, may I address your comments?
Yeah.
Because the Planning Director didn't have an opportunity to present the article...
Yep.
May I briefly walk through what we have here?
Please.
So, what we have is, is a proposal to change a longstanding error in the adopted language in the zoning bylaw, and it is substantive, but it's considered a longstanding error that shouldn't have been adopted that way. So it is substantive, it should have always read "no more than 10 business days." The next item is in the following paragraph where it would be extending the demolition delay if a decision is made that it's a significant structure from six to 12 months, and that that would start on the date of the determination rather than the date that the notification is sent to the building commissioner. Then in the next paragraph, we are adding language that encourages the Historic Commission to meet with the person who owns the property on which the demolition delay has been imposed within 45 days of that decision so that if there are alternatives to try to preserve the structure, those determinations can be brought forth early in the process of the delay that has been imposed. Lastly, if you turn the page, it's repeating the change from six to 12 months because it's carried twice in the existing language. The motion captures a typographical error that is found in the warrant, and that is changing "of" to "or." So what we're looking, in terms of substantive changes, we, sorry, we would need to capture the motion in terms of that spelling error, and then we would also want to separate the 10-day question and the 45-day question from the 12-months question.
Yeah, we can divide the question.
To divide the question.
If, if that's what we decide to do. Actually, did, did we get a report from, from the Planning Board on this? And was it read into the record?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, I've had, thanks, Mrs. Sullivan, who's handed me the, the blue book.
Mm-hmm.
I move that we, question be divided as follows, reading from the... Part A, the three changes, "less" to "more," adding the "within 45 days," and changing "of" to "or," the typographical error on page 54. That's A. And B, be the two portions of the article that refer to 12 months rather than six months.
What about, what about determination?
And the determination to be part of the 12-months.
Can we get you to scribble some of that down for us before this is over?
Sure.
So, we're talking about dividing the question, and if you think, for those of you who are here on Saturday, it's the way we handled the capital budget. We, we took that long article and we took separate votes on different sections, and every time we voted, that was a final vote on that, on that. We're gonna do the same thing.
Okay.
Valerie's got it.
Valerie has it.
What I believe is Valerie is writing out, the amendment would be to divide the motion... What I believe is Valerie is writing out, the amendment would be to divide the motion into parts A and B. A to be the changes in the third from the last paragraph on page 53, from less to more, and the change adding 45 days in the last paragraph on page 53, and changing of to or on the sub-paragraph A at the top of page 54. Part B would be the reference, so I don't go back on pages, to six months to 12 months in the first, second, first and second lines of page 54, from six to 12 months in the next-to-last paragraph on page 53, and from notification to determination, also in that same paragraph.
And those will be two separate votes and two separate...
Yes, that's what I wrote.
May I ask a question?
Go right ahead.
So, we vote, we divide the question, and we vote these changes. Does that mean that we then revote the entire article?
No. No.
So, this is it?
This is it. This is, much like when we did the capital budget, we will vote each of these items, and that vote will be final. We don't need to summarize them together or have a separate...
So, if somebody wanted to go from 12 to six months, the ship sails after this vote for this language change, correct?
We're...
I'm just trying to make it clear. I'm not suggesting anybody go crazy here. I just want to...
And this is...
I don't want any surprises.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I believe the intent of the motion...
Yep.
Is that the A changes could take effect even if the six to 12-months fails.
And so, when we talk about A and B, we're actually going to make two very separate motions.
Okay.
And we will vote them separately. So, A part may pass, the so-called A part may pass.
Okay.
So, the first motion...
Okay.
Is going to be, "I move the town amend..." And, Mr. Lampard, why don't you come visit with me? Make sure we get this straight. "I move the town amend the zoning bylaws, section 609.3, procedures, and to correct typographical errors by changing no more, no less than 10 business days to more than 10 business days, and with, and change, and add..."
To change date of notification to the zoning enforcement officer to date of determination. And, on sub-paragraph A on the next page, at the end of the first line, to change owner of to owner or.
Forty-five days.
Forty-five. Sorry about that. And, in the last paragraph on page 53, to add, after the word "delayed" in line two, "within 45 days."
Of course.
Mr. Guitart.
Fernando Guitart, 14 Pater Point Avenue. Mrs. McNabb, you are so right. We're trying to amend zoning bylaw on the floor of this legislative body. This is crazy. Absolutely. So, I'm getting confused. I mean, Mr. Moderator is trying his best to read language. Mr. Lambert's coming up and correcting him. I don't know what I'm going to vote on. I suggest that we stick to the original intent, is very clear, of the bylaw, the modifications, right? Keep it all together. That's what the planning board has voted six to, in favor of. I believe the historical commission has voted six in favor of. Why are we changing zoning bylaw on the floor? Thank you.
Well, I think we can... Mr. Guitart, to your question, I think it's pretty clear. The very first motion I need is a motion to divide the question. If you vote in favor of dividing the question, then we're going to move to the next section, to the next logical step, which is divide this into two separate motions. If you vote opposed to dividing the question, then we just are stuck with... Then we have the language that we have in front of us, and that's what we will vote on. Does that make sense to people? If you want to deal with breaking this up into two separate votes, you're going to vote yes on dividing the question. If you want to leave it together, you're going to vote no on dividing the question. Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
We got it?
Yep. Jesus.
I'm trying to move the previous question, and I believe by doing so, we will be voting on the original article as presented in the warrant.
No.
Because I don't believe any dividing motions were moved and seconded.
Oh. While we were in the process of trying to discussing whether we were going to divide the question or not, I did hear somebody shout, "I move the previous question," but they had not been recognized. I'm not recognizing that motion. Where we are now, although I do believe that your mo... The suggestion that we move the previous question, which is to vote yes or no on what's in front of you, can be accomplished by deciding whether or not we're going to divide this question. If we say we're going to divide the question, then we can modify it. If we say no, then we're going to deal with the article as presented to us.
Okay. That sounds sensible.
Do I have a motion to divide the question?
So moved.
Second.
I think we know where we are and what one and two means. So, if you want to divide the question, press one. If you want to stick with the motion that's in front of you, press two. Voting is closed, and believe it or not, it is 75 to 75. For two days, I've been saying, "This is a divisive group." I feel let down. So, having said that...
Motion fails.
No. Actually, having said that, while it is tied, the motion failed for lack of a majority. So, we are not going to divide the question.
Motion fails.
What we are... Motion fails for lack of a majority. So, as a result of that, we have in front of us the language that was put on the floor by Mrs. Sullivan back some time ago now.
I don't remember.
And is the language that's on the board behind me. Are we ready to vote on that?
Yes.
We are.
I wish to offer an amendment to Article 26.
You want to offer an amendment on that?
Yeah, not to split the question, to amend it.
Okay, that's fine. No. And that's where we are.
Offering the amendment to strike 12 months in two places where it's proposed to be inserted, and to return to the original six months in both of those places. And I'm happy to speak to my motion to amend.
Do I have a second? I hear a second. You have a motion to amend with a second?
For several years, I've been opposing the historic commission's attempts to extend the demolition delay. I consider the demolition, any demolition delay, to be very burdensome to property owners, especially in light of the fact that we're talking about structures that are only 75 years old. Do the math. We're talking about houses... In 2020, we'll be talking about houses that were built in 1945. So, I personally, until I see something more like a 150-year look back, not a 75-year look back, I can possibly consider voting to extend to 12-month delay. I don't consider 75-year-old structures historically significant. I've said it years, year after year, and I'm saying it again this year. So, I think six months is more than enough of a burden on property owners. I don't own a historic structure, so it doesn't apply to me, but there are a great many structures in our town like that, and this is really burdensome. I think it's very clear that once an owner or buyer in a proposed sale situation has determined that they are going to tear that house down, you are not going to deter them from doing it, even if you had a three-year demolition delay. All you're going to do is chill sales and damage property values. So, I don't favor demolition delay at all, but six months is more than enough. Thanks very much.
So, just to be clear, I understand your amendment would be to strike the 12 months on the first, second, third, fourth, fifth paragraph, and leave it at six? And in the seventh, eighth paragraph, strike the 12 months and leave it at six months? Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you like to speak to the motion, sir? Or the amendment?
In gen... Yes, in general. I'm Robert Roberts III. I'm chairman of the Ducksbury Historical Commission, and I hope everybody read the explanation at the end of this article, because it certainly gives you an idea of what's going on in the state. So, if there are 351 towns in the state, and 152 have demolition delay bylaws, so 29% of them have 12 months or more. There are 6% have 18 months or more, and there are two towns, Milton and Wellesley, have two years, 24 months. So, I urge you to vote yes in the 12-month delay. Chris Skelly, who's the director of local historic programs, local government programs at Mass Historical Commission, says that six months delay is a waste of time. Thank you.
So, just to be clear, sir, I think when you said you'd vote for the 12 months, you would vote against... You're suggesting they vote against this amendment, then?
Correct.
Thank you. Please.
Shilla Lynch Benton in West Street. I'm on the historical commission. I disagree with two speakers before about if an owner has an intent, they're going to go through it. I'd like to share a success story. We had a owner come before the historical commission with a demolition delay on the old hotel up on Standish Shore, the Standish Hotel, and they brought with them the architect, a renowned architect in Massachusetts, Patrick Ahern, who didn't know the history of the hotel. They came in with a demolition delay, they heard about the history of the hotel, the famous architect saved the middle of the hotel. The new house on the north side of the Standish Hotel is now being constructed with the old hotel saved in the middle, and through the property, through the process of the historical commission, it was a success story. So, I disagree with the previous speaker about intent. Thank you, and I hope you support the 12-month delay. I have more comments when we get to the next one.
Thank you. Mrs. McNabb?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I also want to just clarify that the delay is not imposed on everyone who has a structure that just happens to be the 75 years or older. It's only if the historic commission, through a bunch of criteria, deem that property to be of some type of historic value. So, I think it would be a disservice for someone to suggest that this blanketly applies to every structure in town, because that's simply not the case.
Thank you.
Good point.
Just one second. Is a woman standing? No, okay. Mr. Guitart. And in fact, I think you may be the last speaker.
All right. Thank you. Fernando Guitart, 14 Pater Point Avenue. Yeah, 12 months or not. We, as residents of the town of Ducksbury, value his historic fabric and semi-rural character. It's why we love this town, and one of the reasons newcomers come and join our community. We take pride in our connection with the town's rich history and historic homes, many built in the 18th and 19th century. We work hard to preserve the town's historic building as an open space, and we do it in three ways. First, through the creation of local historic districts. To date, a number of individual homeowners have made the commitment of placing their homes in local historic districts. In essence, it's their gift of history to the town and the community. Second, through the Community Preservation Act, where we contribute a portion of our property and state taxes, allowing a community preservation committee to fund historic preservation and restoration, as well as acquire and preserve open space. Finally, lastly, through our bylaws, the one we're debating today. In 1997, this legislative body put in place that bylaw with a clear intent of to, quote, "protect and preserve buildings and structures within the town which reflect or constitute distinctive features of the architectural, cultural, economic, political, or social history of the town, and to encourage the preservation and restoration rather than demolition of such buildings and structures. By furthering these purposes, the public welfare shall be promoted, making the town a more attractive and desirable place in which to live, learn, and work." And that's what the historical commission does. They just don't look at 75 years or later and decide, right? They look at the fabric, they look at the contribution, they look at what it means to this town, and then they make a decision. As we have seen in many of our annual town meetings, bylaws are revised and updated to improve language and better reflect an intent, as is the case, and in the previous article that we approved. So, in turn, the increase in time period from six to 12 months before demolition permit is issued will be more effective in encouraging historic owners to reevaluate their plans to demolish all or part of their house instead of, and instead look at preservation. And that's the intent of this bylaw, to protect and preserve the historic fabric of our town, and I quote, "making it more attractive and desirable place to live, learn, and work." Actually, so, I urge you to vote no on this motion, and in a final effort, on a much lighter note, to help you sway your deliberations, I'll leave you with the words taken from the song "Big Yellow Taxi" by Joni Mitchell. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone? Thank you.
So, I think the historical commission is a little confused up here. We're voting no? He's on the amendment, Fernando, and then there will be another...
Then there'll be... So, what's going to happen? Excuse me. What's going to happen is, we have an amendment to change from 12 to six. We will vote on that. If you want to leave it at 12, you're going to vote no. If you want to increase it, if you want to decrease it to six months, you're going to vote yes.
And then, there's another vote after that?
Then we'll go back to the main motion, which will either read six or 12, depending on what we do right now. So, we still have two votes to get to the end of this article. First is the amendment.
Does this require a majority?
Yes, two-thirds.
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 Amendment is a majority.
No, for the... Does the amendment...
The amendment is a majority vote. The article itself is two-thirds.
You change zoning with only two votes?
Nope. You can do the amendment with a majority vote. It's going to change, to change the main motion, which is changing the bylaw, that's a two-thirds vote. I think we're clear on that?
Yeah.
So, I'm going to call for a vote now. All those in favor of changing it to six months is press one. For those opposed to it, press two. Voting is closed. The amendment fails. 109 to 49.
There you go.
So, after that, we're back to a vote on the article, which was presented way back when. I'm not sure we need to... I'm not sure we need to read it, but it's the article that's behind me. There have been no changes after all of that discussion. We haven't changed anything.
It was good times, though.
So, I think we know what we're voting on. If we're comfortable voting, I'm going to call for a vote right now.
Yep.
No split, whole thing.
No split.
As written.
That was in, yes, the changing of to or was in the original motion. Yes?
I'd like to speak to, shortly, to the 12-month delay. Locally, Marshfield, our next-door neighbor, has a 12-month delay. Barnstable has a 12-month delay. Bourne, Dennis, Falmouth, Hanover, New Bedford, Orleans, and Situate. Middleborough has an 18-month delay. Newton has an 18-month delay. Wellfleet has an 18-month delay, as does Chatham. Egbertown, some people call us disparagingly the Hysteric Commission, instead of the Historical Commission, and all we're asking for is a 12-month delay of demolition of significant properties. Egbertown Historical Commission, you cannot approve your own entry, your doors, your windows. Construction material is chosen by the Historical Commission. Nantucket, you can't choose the color of your house. In Hingham, the Historic Division has a committee of seven people that give you a certificate of appropriateness on your choice in the Historic District of your, so we are not an onerous Historical Commission. All we're trying to do is save the character of Duxbury by instituting a 12-month delay, and only in the last two years, one-third of the properties before us went to the six-month delay. Most of the properties, we understand the situation. It's very friendly group to work with. We are just trying to get the town to save the character and the nature, and we hope that you vote for the 12-month delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All those, I'm going to call for a vote now. All those in favor of the change, which would go to a 12-month delay, is one. All those opposed and want to leave it where it is is two. Voting is closed, and the motion carries. 115 to 44. Mrs. Sullivan, article number 27.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws, Article 425, Intensity and Dimensional Regulations for All Neighborhood Business Districts, Section 425.1, Number 5, Lot Area Frontage, Depth, Dimensions, and Coverage, with text to be inserted, shown in bold underline, and text to be deleted, shown in strike-through, such markings for illustrative purposes only, as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee voted eight-zero to recommend.
I believe we have a report from the planning board?
Yeah. Cindy Ladd Fiorini, Clerk of the Planning Board, Article 27, to amend the zoning bylaws, Neighborhood Business District Coverage. After a public hearing held on February 27, 2019, enclosed on that date, the planning board voted five to one to support the article.
Thank you. I'm guessing Mr. Wadsworth wants to be recognized? I think we'll have the planning director make a presentation on the article first.
I guess I'll ask for your help with advancing slides. I don't see the, oh, okay. I believe the planning board chairman wanted to make the opening remarks with this presentation.
Scott Casagrande again, Chairman of the Planning Board. I just want to make a brief comment. I know we looked at this article last year. It's pretty much identical, only we're going to have, instead, this year, we have a presentation for you to show you exactly how we got to where we are in the past on this and why we're proposing it again this year. So, I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone first. Thank you.
Thank you. So, here we go. We did a study, we're doing the comprehensive plan now as a planning board, and what we're talking about is NB1 and NB2. We have two remaining undeveloped lots in the NB1 and NB2 zone totaling less than one acre, and in the Aqua for Protection overlay district. What we're looking at here is 1% of the land use in the town and less than 3% of what's been zoned for this use in the town. The zoning bylaw caps coverage, or what we call impervious surfaces, that's how it's defined in the bylaw. Impervious means it runs off, and pervious means it goes into the groundwater. We have a commercial impervious coverage limit at 50%, and the building coverage is capped at 15%. Both, well, the commercial can add pervious improvements, such as gravel for parking, pervious pavers for walkways and parking, and the like. Beyond that, to the extent that buffers and setbacks would allow. The issue that has been discussed for years is the fact that the gravel parking tends to hard pack, and the water running off of those areas is not pretreated for oil and grit, as is the standard practice in Massachusetts, to prevent the oil and grit from going directly into the groundwater. This is a diagram of how it's done. I don't have a pointer, but it starts on the impervious surface, heads down into a catch basin, which captures sediment, then goes through an oil and grit separator, which is periodically maintained as well, and then infiltration into the groundwater. Issues with gravel, in addition to the hard pack, are, and what I mentioned before, the other option that's often used is pervious pavement, which requires vacuuming and intensive maintenance, and oftentimes will tend to fail over time. So, to walk you through the zoning bylaw, we zoned Neighborhood Business Districts throughout town in certain specific locations, because we asked for these services to be provided to the town and listed what we wanted. If the use is not listed, it's not allowed. When we do that, businesses tend to arrive in those areas that we've zoned, asking for that kind of business to be located here. Our zoning is very conservative. Every business requiring more than three parking spaces must obtain a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and any parking lot with more than 10 spaces must go through Administrative Site Plan Review through the planning board. Administrative Site Plan Review and the Zoning Board of Appeals process tend to look at setbacks, landscaping requirements, and stormwater pretreatment on the paved impervious surfaces due to the vehicular use. We impose the mandatory state DEP guidelines, and these designs are peer-reviewed by engineers to ensure that they're going to work properly at the Administrative Site Plan Review level. The zoning bylaw requires changes to approved site plans to go through a new Administrative Site Plan Review, and if they don't, that's a violation of the zoning bylaw. It's stated in the bylaw already. Duxbury allows businesses to use pervious coverage to go above the 50% impervious coverage definition while maintaining a 15% limit on the building size in the NB districts. Some businesses use this to create additional parking, which results in higher development footprints that leave portions of the property's parking untreated before leaching into the groundwater with respect to oil and grit. Some of Duxbury's existing businesses have been raising concerns for over 10 years, and would prefer to have all pervious parking and vehicle lanes allowed to them for the uses that they already have. Again, all but two very small lots have been developed. They need the parking for the buildings. Parking is very expensive, whether it be gravel or paved. It's hard to maintain and plow different surfaces, and very costly. People trip and fall. There are liability issues, and the gravel and the interface is not attractive. We have been talking about studying this for more than 10 years. In 2002, there was a citizens' petition to increase coverage in the NB. The planning board determined that it should be IPed in advance of town meeting because of the poor wording in the article. In 2003, Article 25, the town did an overhaul of its zoning bylaw and introduced Administrative Site Plan Review. Neighborhood Business coverage was defined as 50% impervious with a 15% building cap at that time. In 2004, there was a citizens' petition to increase the zoning coverage. Thank you. To increase the coverage in the neighborhood business, the planning board took no position. However, the article was IPed in advance of town meeting. In 2007, again, Article 28, there was a citizens' petition to increase coverage in the Neighborhood Business District. Again, it was IPed in advance of town meeting, and again, the planning board took no position. In 2008, Article 36, citizens' petition requested to increase coverage in NB to 80%. This was IPed in advance so that the planning board could study the issue. The planning board took no position, but formed a working group. That working group worked for two years, and in 2009, approached town meeting with Article 40. Sponsored by the planning board, the request was to increase coverage in NB to 80% with 100% stormwater treatment. This was IPed by town meeting after debate. Again, the planning board took no position. In 2010, Article 16, again, there was a citizens' petition, that is, one, two, three, four, five, citizens' petitions asking to increase lot coverage in the NB, this time tiered by lot size. Again, it was IPed in advance so that the planning board could restudy the issue. A second working group was appointed, and the minutes of that working group's votes are in your warrant explanation. Again, in 2011, the working group, after studying the issue, came to a decision that it would go for a 60-40 on a split vote. The planning board, under consideration, determined that it would recommend a 70-30 on a split vote. Once again, the articles were IPed in advance, as there were other study groups looking at parking and open space. All of the working groups determined that they should IP the articles, and there was a lack of consensus. Nothing changed. Here are the types of uses after an intensive study of all of the Neighborhood Business parcels in the entire town. We have a large portion of retail, an equally large portion of professional and office, a mix of residential and commercial, that is significantly smaller, and a mix of commercial and retail, again, significantly smaller. There's a misspelling here, but multifamily residential, there are two properties owned by the Duxbury Housing Authority, which are not included here because they're too small to be relevant in the pie chart. Overall, the footprints in the town in NB1 and NB2, after using aerial photographs and GIS to actually digitize and measure the development footprint, meaning both the impact of dirt, gravel, and impervious surfaces versus pervious surfaces for every single parcel, and looking at the average, we have a 60%, 66% coverage in our existing, again, almost entirely-developed Neighborhood Business districts. After accounting for constraints on larger properties, such as the Island Creek Oyster property and the Ducksplex, the average is still 66% coverage. There are other properties that are rather large that have come up, Bonjies and Osbornes, Fred's Fix-It, the northern portion of Cox's Corner, including the two undeveloped smaller lots, are limited to 15% impervious coverage because they are all located in the APOD. Last year, the planning board recommended 70% coverage and received a majority in support, but not quite the two-thirds required. If passed, the planning board will deny gravel beyond 70%, meaning that once they reach a 70% development footprint, we will deny anything beyond that through the Administrative Site Plan Review process. And in addition, we will send a letter to all of the Neighborhood Business District owners, reminding them that they must come before the planning board for changes to approve site plans, otherwise they are in violation of the zoning bylaw. We can't do this now, because, as we said, a majority of the businesses are at 66%. Many are higher than that. Duxbury Bay, lower portions of the Bluefish and Jones Rivers are listed as impaired water bodies due to nutrients. This is not oil and grit, which is what migrates from the parking areas. We are losing a significant and rather disturbing amount of eel grass in the bay. We don't know why. We can't attribute it to any particular runoff, and it may be related to boat traffic. However, we have been doing a lot of work to try to maintain the quality in the harbor. For example, in Snug Harbor, the town of Duxbury, through the Conservation Commission, DPW, and the Selectmen, as well as the supportive town meeting, implemented a wastewater package plant and stormwater engineering to retrofit and pretreat all of the stormwater from Snug Harbor. Now, we're looking at, again, redevelopment. We have a situation right now where a project is under construction, 4,800 square feet, all of the parking spaces are proposed as pervious pavement. If they were able to pave these and treat, you would have a resulting 62% coverage. Last year, we did not pass the article. Millbrook Marketplace was used the pervious pavement, and we have a missed opportunity there. Looking at Patel, if the property were to be redeveloped, the current building coverage is 7% with a 61% footprint after accounting for wetlands. If this becomes more developed, do we want the increased parking to be untreated, such as gravel or pervious, or do we want to be in a position to require pretreatment? We're recommending 70%. Scott, do you have additional comments?
I'll try to be brief. I know a number of people want to speak to this article. So, again, last year, we brought the article. There was some information regarding locations in town and what we had for coverages, so we really felt it was important to put together a full proposal for you guys with the presentation, as well as, so you know what Valerie has done work-wise into this. We have a, every single one of our Neighborhood Business Districts laid out with what we have for lot coverage, how much is gravel versus not, et cetera, et cetera. That's where we came up with all of the numbers as to where we are. What we have now is a situation in town where pretty much, almost all of our Neighborhood Business District parking areas, they come to us in all of our business areas with the 15% lot coverage under the building, which is the maximum they're allowed to do in the Neighborhood Business District. So, expanding this from 50% lot coverage to 70% lot coverage doesn't mean the buildings get any bigger. It's really just dealing with the parking that we have now. With the 50% that's in place, you get 15% for the building. The remainder of the 50% goes into asphalt, either for the driveway, for the parking that they can fit in, and then all the rest of it that brings them up to the 70% in most all cases, is gravel, which we can't, you saw the diagram of the treatment service, doesn't go into those type of bays, because it just runs through the gravel and off. None of that stuff, none of that is treated. So, what we really want to do is, if we go to the 70%, which is what almost all of our properties in town have now, we can then, and again, this only happens if, they're not required to go do this right now or anything else, but if they redevelop or they want to change and do some work with their parking lot, they have to come back through the planning board for site plan approval, because it's a change in what they have right now. And also, some of the property owners have mentioned, in doing this, we all know that basically gravel parking is an imprecise parking unit. People park four feet away from each other. There's no lines. People aren't utilizing that parking area in an effect. People aren't utilizing that parking area in an efficient manner. Many of these gravel parking lots, if redeveloped to where it is in asphalt and we are containing it, the spaces will be delineated and in many cases, we might actually end up with less lot coverage because the total number of spaces they need will be delineated and put into place where the gravel sprawls. So besides, you know, there's also life safety, et cetera. Gravel, we all know with just the last storm, it gets plowed up, it gets all over the place. The gravel expands, the gravel gets pushed into the grass, it may not make it back out. So again, I just hope you guys will support us on this because at the end of the day, this is the proper way to deal with the water treatment of coming off of our parking lots versus the hard-packed gravel that we have right now. So we encourage your support. Thank you.
Mr. Wadsworth.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Wadsworth, member of the Planning Board, 115 Elm Street. I'm the one. I was the one last year and I'm the one this year. And I want to explain in a little more detail, if you allow me, why I'm the one. This is, unlike the others, a very simple zoning change, going from 50 to 70. That's all it says. Doesn't say anything else. We're going from 50 to 70. Doesn't say anything about gravel. Doesn't say anything about low-impact design. Just going from 50 to 70. Stormwater. What is stormwater? Rainfall deposited on pervious materials such as roads and parking lots. Over the past history of stormwater, our road and parking lot designs were to design drainage systems to move that water off the road or parking lots. Maintenance was to remove accumulated sands from the roadway and drainage systems usually in the spring. In recent years, we've discovered that the stormwater had other contaminants in the water, nitrogen and phosphates principally from parking lots and cars therein. This would impact surface waters downstream. The bay as an example. On the Cape, Scott Horsley demonstrated, that's Scott Horsley of Horsley &amp; Whitten, demonstrated that rainfall's first flush could move these products to the nearby bays impacting the water quality. EPA developed methods, when Scott was working them, for cleaning up these products with low-impact designs whereby the water came in in contact with growing plants. These plants would take up these products, resulting in 100% removal during the growing season. The average annual removals were in the order of 40% for the year. No moving parts, less expensive design, and minor maintenance costs of plant replacement. But we do need space to install swales. If you could put snow piles on these swales and off the pavement, and you could put snow piles on these swales and off the pavement. And I'm told by some that installation costs were less expensive than the traditional drainage system. Our own draft master plan has noted in its Goal 1 that the town should, quote, "strengthen zoning requirements for low-impact development techniques and stormwater management strategies to improve quality of stormwater runoff," unquote. This doesn't do that. Increasing impervious areas goes in the wrong direction. We should keep the 70% coverage, which we've had since the early 70s, until we are able to install low-impact designs to treat this problem and systems to encourage retrofitting of existing parking lots. Then I think we can look at larger parking lots. There are other reasons for keeping the parking lots small, less traffic, less stormwater, less noise. And you've heard that building sites may be unaffected. I can't really speak for that, but... We now are purchasing products delivered by others. It is much more common now, resulting in less need for malls, small and large. Maybe we should look at our parking rigs as being excessive in parking spot design before we increase coverage. And some, maybe we should review a lot of stuff before we decrease coverages. Decreasing coverage is difficult at best. Thank you for your patience and wisdom in this matter.
Thank you. Woman up in the back who's been waiting patiently?
Mary Lynn Carson, 21 Washington Street. There's something counterintuitive about this, which leads me to ask some questions. Although one would assume that gravel, a loose surface, would in fact somehow filter the water, the stormwater that's running off, unlike a smooth surface that's paved. What I hear you telling me is that that's not the case. Ms. Massard or somebody, can you respond to this, Mr. Grande?
Actually, I think we have a response for you.
Sure. Right now, and I think what sometimes gets confused with some of this, in parking lot, paved parking lot surfaces, we capture the water and it's sent through the treatment facilities that you saw in the slides there. That's done through the administrative site plan review. It's a totally separate part of the bylaw at which we deal with that. This section of the bylaw deals with what you see in it. And under administrative site plan review is where we review the design of the parking lot and the treatment of the water on that parking lot on that site. Currently, the way things are, you end up with 50% lot coverage, 15% of which is your building. The remaining parking becomes gravel. So we don't capture any of the water. So if the cars are parked on the gravel, anything dripping off of those cars is not being captured and run down through the designs that you saw before. It's simply trying to go into the ground. Now, keep in mind that the things you're going to lose off of cars, these petroleum-based products, the greases, the grits, oils and everything else, every time it rains, they come back to the surface. They don't sink down completely, so they don't end up being dealt with. And they just run off until they run off into a river or something else. So we want to capture those and treat those on the parking.
Okay, that's then, I think that maybe needs to be more emphasized in your presentation. And I did see that elevation that showed the different types. But are you saying that that capturing and treatment plan is occurring in each of the parking lots or where is that?
That occurs with the impervious coverage on the lot. We capture the runoff from the buildings.
Right.
We capture the runoff from the sidewalks, et cetera, and the paved portions. The designs for these sites, when these business district sites are built with their parking lots, the, I believe it's Section 615 of the bylaw, where we do the site plan review and that part which involves the parking. We then have all of those systems are designed by their engineers and then we have our engineer do a peer review of it. They go back and forth and we figure out how that piece of it's going to be, as well as some additional runoff that will be where swales and et cetera, items like that are also placed in. But none of those calculations take into account the gravel parking that all of these sites have.
I understand. All right. So is it possible to go back to that illustration of the different means for capturing and treating? Can that be talked about a little more? I know it's not part of this article, but it is part of the overall thinking about how this is done. And I need to understand, is this a Duxbury zoning and planning issue or is this a state issue about capturing and treating in catch basins, oil and grit separators, and infiltration? Those were the only ones I got to write down. There may be others, but is this a state law that we're actually capturing and treating this?
So state, we use the state guidelines and the state guidelines are the industry standard in Massachusetts. And they require that anything on a pervious and impervious surface where it's running off is captured through an oil and grit separator to take that out. However, Duxbury allows gravel parking and pervious pavers, which do not have to capture. They can put filter fabrics underneath, but they aren't going to be capturing the, those contaminants. And that's the concern.
Okay, so we in Duxbury, if these, the capturing and the treatment processes are at the highest state required level possible, we are using that now? Because it just intuitively, you think, okay, it's going back to Joni Mitchell's song, "Pave Paradise and Put Up a Parking Lot." But you think of a parking lot as asphalt and it's a bad thing and there's all this runoff. And I live, I'm the first residential house after the businesses at Hall's Corner, which is downstream from the hill that is Hall's Corner. So I do know about runoff. And I'm not even asking for personal reasons, but I am asking because I think this is a very counterintuitive type of change here because we're saying that paving is good because it allows us to capture and treat it according to state laws, whereas not paving it and just putting gravel down does not allow us to capture and treat it. Am I correct?
That's basically what we're saying. And it is counterintuitive. I actually posed the question to the Jones River Waterset Association and to the North and South River Waterset Association folks last week and said, you know, what's your thoughts on this? And they said, well, actually, it makes a lot of sense when you're retrofitting existing parking lots. And when we did this study, we're finding that a large number, for instance, the plaza where we have the one-acre building where the brothers will be, that's at like 81% coverage, if I can recall off the top of my head. So if they were to come back and retrofit, redesign, it would actually be a lesser footprint and we would be able to capture, there would be more grass, that kind of thing. But the intent here is that over the years, many, many businesses have been permitted in town absolutely through our zoning, which allows for the gravel and the pervious pavement to be used. And they exist today. And we already have these uses here. And so the question is, can we try to capture back some of that stormwater that now is leaching into the ground with these contaminants in it? We'd prefer to do that. And we'd prefer to have the trip and fall hazards and the other issues, knowing that these can fail over time and become hard-packed surfaces without the treatment. It's our preference and our recommendation to retrofit. And I did not have any objection from the North and South River Waterset Association or the Jones River Waterset Association folks that I spoke to about the issue. So I really want to get, you know, their comments. I myself have a master's degree in environmental studies and I'm very aware of the issues related to stormwater. And this is where this is coming from. The issue has been debated for many years by town meeting, the issue of whether or not landscaping and streetscape designs, which is a separate issue and is being taken up by the planning board. For instance, in Hall's Corner, we had a display on Saturday where we have a professional architect working with the town to implement and recommend design standards in the comprehensive plan. In addition to that, town meeting gave us funding and we are using it. We have our first stormwater design guidelines meeting with our consultant, Beals &amp; Thomas, a week from today. And we will be looking to improve our design standards in the administrative site plan review process, through that process, across all of the different commissions and boards in town so that we, when there's some opportunity and it can fit to put a low-impact design, such as Mr. Wadsworth pointed out, by all means, we'd like to do that. Oftentimes though, these projects have already been built out and they are already relying on that parking that we've allowed in our zoning bylaw to take place on gravel and pervious surfaces. So if we can put the low-impact design, by all means. If we can't, the capture that we use now is exactly what the state mandates and what we follow.
All right. So you're saying we allow, previously, we've allowed 50%. We actually, in effect, have like 66% in areas, right? According to your presentation?
Yes, we're averaging 66%. Many of our properties are 70 or greater.
So by making it 70, does that give you the ability to go back and correct, to have people do a capture and treat runoff where they didn't have it before?
It's still only going to...
Is that a yes?
If they choose to redevelop.
A yes is...
Yes, yes.
Simple answer.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. It's very frustrating. I so appreciate all you people who volunteer on the planning board, but I got to tell you, we get to the language of these articles from the planning board and it's very frustrating to try to sort through it. So if we can...
I'm sorry, if you could...
Distill it to the essence and really try to understand it for all of us. That's all I'm trying to do up here and I thank you for your comments.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your yes/no question completely. You cut out on me.
Could you repeat your yes/no question?
The yes/no question? Well, I saw Valerie shaking her head yes, so that's why I said it's a yes. My question was, by going to 70% of impervious surface and eliminating the gravel situations, does that allow you to then improve better standards in terms of capturing and treating the water runoff that is harmful? Does that allow you to make sure that's there as opposed to not there?
It gives us the opportunity to impose doing that, yes. What we do, if it's paved, there are certain guidelines. Well, it'd be optional right now.
Right, right now, there's no treatment. So it's optional for the owner of the property if they wanted to make an upgrade to their parking lot to come in through administrative site plan review and capture that stormwater. If they come in through administrative site plan review, then we will impose that on them.
That was what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. We have quite a few people queuing up, so I guess I'm going to ask you to perhaps keep your questions pointed. Gentleman in the back, on my right, then I believe it's Mrs. McNabb is behind you, then a gentleman up there who's been, I'm sorry, gentleman over there, Sally, Mrs. Wilson down here, then Mrs. McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Glenn on Colonial Drive. I'm a member of the planning board. I think we're suffering from analysis paralysis here. I've been on the planning board for a number of years. This has come up pretty much every year that I've sat on the board and the question has not been whether it should remain at 50%. It's whether it should be 60, 70, or 80%. And there's only so many times you can kick a can until you're out of a can. And I think we're here. As Valerie showed on the slides, this has come up maybe a dozen times, at least 10 at town meeting. And it's very clear, if anything, that 50% doesn't work. So the question is, what's the right percentage? We've talked about 60, we've talked about 70, we've talked about 80 over the years. I think 70 is a pretty fair mid-range and we need to do something. Time is now. It's great that we can finally put this behind us, hopefully if town meeting approves. But I'd ask that we please put this to bed. It's time to act and I think 70 is an imminently reasonable percentage. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman up here on the second deck to my left.
Mr. Moderator, friends, Robert and McTronan, Pill Hill Lane. And I understand thoroughly what the previous speaker was saying regarding the seeming contradiction of asphalt versus where we live with the rural and historical society. We didn't move to Duxbury because of the beautiful asphalt paving that we have here. But I thoroughly understand the point being made by the planning board as far as runoff. And so what I'm simply suggesting is maybe, as you see oftentimes with driveways, you do have a subsurface that is impervious and on top of it, you have either stone dust or clam shells or something like that. Because what I think is really bothering me is to see our beautiful, somewhat bucolic and rural neighborhoods being expanded out by hot top. And it's, I understand the need for parking, but I think we should also consider addressing the aesthetics of it. And unlike the slide that was shown, I don't think gravel, which I have a gravel driveway, is, you know, unsightly, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McNabb. I'm sorry, Mrs. Wilson.
Sarah Wilson, 120 Bay Road. Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, there are a number of confusing items here and there are a number of things that this town meeting should know. The first is, if you increase impervious coverage from 50% in the business districts to 70%, we could wind up being at 80 or 85% because there is nothing... to 70%, we could wind up being at 80 or 85% because there is nothing in this proposed change which would, could stop the Board of Appeals from once again approving more impervious coverage in the nature of pervious pavement and crushed stone. They did it by, not by accident, but rather intentionally during the late '70s, after we had adopted the 50% limit and through until the early '80s, when it stopped. I understand it is beginning again on a small, in a small way. The second thing you should keep in mind is that I have identified 15 properties in Neighborhood Business 1 and 2, a total of 23.47 acres, which are presently at or well below 50% and could be covered with more impervious pavement, parking, sidewalks, and buildings. Another thing you should keep in mind is that the planning board presentation mixed up single-family lots with business lots. Single-family lots are only 15% building coverage. Business lots, under 302 definitions, the coverage is a percentage of the lot. And that coverage right now, percentage, is 50. And it includes, under 302, the building, accessory buildings, impervious pavement, and sidewalks. So 50% includes the building and the pavement and any impervious material. This would be the potential for an increase in the footprint of buildings as well as the parking. There goes paradise. This has been a bad idea ever since it's been brought up, both the times it's been turned down by the meeting 10 or 12 years ago and last year when it was turned down and the many times that it's been IPed. It just doesn't fly because it's a bad idea. Why? Increasing impervious coverage increases runoff. Simple as that. And man-made systems for drainage aren't as good as the good old earth and grass and trees and natural systems. It contravenes, to increase, contravenes all the principles of modern planning. 12 and 15 years ago, state agencies and environmental organizations recommended exactly what Duxbury put in place in 1973, a maximum of 50%. Now, it's true, the Board of Appeals, over the years, made a few mistakes. So did building inspectors. I've looked at the files and they sometimes approve more than they should have. That's no reason we should endorse their mistakes. It's also true that a lot of the development before 1973 was in excess of 50%. But when our planners in 1973 recommended 50% as the impervious coverage rate, they were nationally known and they were cutting edge. And when we adopted that limitation, we were cutting edge. We were way ahead of the curve. But 10 to 15 years ago, planners in the state worked with seven South Shore towns to guess what? Reduce impervious coverage in the other towns to 50% or lower. Even the newest man-made drainage can't contain it all. It's better, the state believes and environmental planners believe. It's much better to reduce the impervious coverage, preserve more open space, so that you can have room for natural systems, natural vegetation, vegetated soils, rain gardens, and bioretention areas. When the impervious coverage gets to above 50%, there isn't room for these newer ways of better managing drainage. There's just not enough land left to do it right. Why would we go in the opposite direction? I keep asking that and I can't get a good answer. There are lots of areas that you know well that will be affected by this. Probably the largest property is Batel Island Creek in the harbor. Our harbor is being watched very closely by the state and the federal government. They don't know where the tipping point is, but they know that the drainage in the septic that is going into that harbor is causing a lot of problems. Batel is 100, the lot, which was created at the special town meeting last year, is 11 and a half acres. I have the plan right here. It could be significantly changed if you adopt this increase in impervious coverage.
Mrs. Wilson, I guess I'd ask that you start to-
I'm almost there, Mr. Moderator. There are many newer buildings that are 50% or under. The new Weemeyer Building, successful. The Island Creek Office Buildings, it's an office park. The grass and trees are very obvious. They'd be gone. The Tile Building, it was called the Snug Harbor Tile Building in Cox's Corner, is at 50%. Goodbye to the grass and trees. 47 Railroad Avenue in Millbrook, Millbrook Square. In Cox's Corner, there are two empty lots on Enterprise Street at 0%. Sean Dowlen's Building is at 50%. There is some extra gravel, but his impervious coverage is 50%. Bob Galvin's Building in Enterprise Street is 48%. Duxbury has always run counter to what the other towns in this area have done in business. We march to a different drummer. We do it differently. We like trees and open space. We like our business districts to reflect the neighborhoods. Our business districts are called neighborhood business districts because they reflect our neighborhood in scale and character and they, a lot of them still have some grass and trees. I suggest that you turn this down. It doesn't make good sense from a planning point. It doesn't make good sense from an aesthetic point of view. And it certainly doesn't make good sense from an environmental point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McNabb? You've patiently waited, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just, I think that Mrs. Wilson makes some excellent points. I also just want to clarify that Mr. Wadsworth was the vote of the planning board that did not support this article. And I want to say that I served on the planning board for 14 years with Mr. Wadsworth and I know of no one that can hold a candle to him when it comes to his water knowledge, both, you know, drinking water and runoff and other resources. But he is the guru and so I really urge you all to listen to him. He does not support this article. Yes, it's true, it's been brought up year after year, as long as I can remember. And it's because it's a tough, it's a tough call. Duxbury doesn't want to see more pavement. I don't want to see more pavement. I understand intuitively that there are some better management practices with the asphalt. However, that doesn't necessarily mean that we need to increase the amount of asphalt. If the planning board wants to keep, if wants to improve the treatment of the runoff, then require asphalt, but keep it at 50% or, as Mrs. Wilson suggests, make it lower. You don't have to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I would hope and encourage that everyone to vote this article down and again, or have, you know, I don't want to suggest another IP and I'm not going to make an amendment because I don't think we should be amending on town meeting floor these articles to bring it down to 50%, which is what it's at, but require asphalt because that's what I think that, where they should start with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lester Lloyd, 21 Washington Street. I just wanted to speak to three points that I thought I heard made after the folks from the planning board spoke, that I think were spoken incorrectly. As I understand the previous presentation, this increase in impervious surfaces will not allow the area of building coverage to be increased, number one. Second, having impervious surfaces do not increase runoff if that means off the property. You can't actually allow products to leave the property. And thirdly, I believe natural systems do not remove petroleum products, which a paved surface, as I understand it, would allow removal of petroleum products. Thank you.
And do we have an answer for them?
With regard to your first question, the building coverage, is Mike, is Mike, no, or not there? Okay, sorry. Building coverage is not being changed by this. The bylaw allows for 15% and that's it. That's not being, that piece of it's not being changed. If somebody's developed under 15%, then that piece wouldn't change there. So, and you had the second question?
As I understand it, having pervious, rather, having impervious surfaces paving does not increase runoff because-
We capture that, yes.
It's captured, exactly.
Yep.
And my third point was that natural systems do not remove petroleum products, whereas a paved system will capture it, so I don't think it's-
Also correct, that's what we've been told by engineering, yes.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Jackson S. Kent Jr., 1351 Tremont Street. I'm also a owner of business property in Duxbury. I've been a resident for 73 years, almost 74. I shop locally, I park locally, I plow my own snow. And I think that we should allow this to go to 70% because it gives us controlled and treated parking. It's environmentally better because we do control it and the runoff remains as designed if we can control this parking. So I would vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're starting to hear some of the same points being made over and over again. Are we ready for a vote now?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So. This is a zoning article, it's going to take a two-thirds vote. If you're in favor of the changes proposed, please vote 1. If you're opposed, vote 2. Voting is open. Motion has a majority, but not two-thirds. It fails, 87 yes, 45 no. We just have a few more articles, I think the end is near. Please? I'll try to talk faster, okay. Article number 28, we have a, I dare I say, it's a relatively simple, straightforward zoning article.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws, Article 425 Intensity and Dimensional Regulations for all Neighborhood Business Districts and in particular, Section 425.1, Lot Area Frontage Depth Dimension and Coverage Number 4, Lot Dimension for NB1 and NB2, with text be inserted, shown in bold, underline such markings for illustrative purposes only as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend.
Please, reporter of the planning board.
So after a public hearing held on January 9th, 2019, and closed on that date, the planning board voted 5 to 0 to support the article.
Valerie, may we have an explanation of what's going on?
There was a typo in last year's warrant. We'd like to fix it.
If you have the warrant in front of you, if you look at page 57, it's pretty clear the underline and what has happened. The front sent back should have been 10 feet and it reads 0 feet. So we're asking your permission to make that change. It's a zoning article, it takes a two-thirds vote. I think this is simple and straightforward. Does anybody have any questions or want to have any discussion on this?
No.
Sensing none, I'm going to ask for a vote. It does take two-thirds. If you're in favor of it, press 1. If you're opposed to it, press 2. You are back to being a decisive group and I thank you. It passed 98 to 3. Article-
29.
29.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into agreements for terms up to 10 years in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30B, for the management of the Cherry Lane Bog and the Duxbury Bog, as printed in the warrant. Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend.
Second.
Did Joe leave? Oh, there you are.
Mr. Grady, perhaps you could give us a quick overview of what we're being asked to do.
Sorry, buddy. There we go.
Sorry, I was asleep. The Conservation Commission has seven cranberry bogs that are under farm management agreements. Two are due to expire this year. We'd like to renew them. State procurement laws require us to get town meeting authorization for agreements that are 10 years. We like to have long-term agreements for these bogs. One of them, of course, is the East Street Bog. We've had it under agreement for nearly 50 years.
Any questions? Any discussion? Sensing none, all those, I'm going to call for a vote. If you're in favor, press 1. If you're opposed to it, press 2. It is a majority vote. Motion carries 105 to 1. We have a series of CPC articles. And I believe we're going to start with an overall, a short overall presentation from Ms. Morris on the upcoming articles, then we'll have some individual speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've abbreviated this in the, due to time here. I'm Holly Morris, I'm the chair of the CPA Committee, CPC. This year, the CPC reviewed eight proposals and six met the requirements of the Community Preservation Act. One proposal will be funded with the Conservation Fund and is therefore not on the warrant. All CPA proposals are rigorously vetted and must have the approval of the CPC before coming to town meeting. Preservation of Resources appears to be of great importance- Preservation of resources appears to be of great importance this year. The preservation of historic records held by the Town Clerk and the First Parish Church. The Alden Kindred have requested funds for restoration of the Alden House windows. The Duxbury Rural and Historical Society is addressing the restoration of over 60 windows and gutters at the King Caesar House. The Duxbury Housing Authority has also requested funds for the preservation of its buildings, which hold 52 units for elderly and disabled. And the Recreation Department intends to convert tennis courts into pickleball courts, which will hopefully preserve the longevity of our citizens. We are often asked why CPA money is often given to private organizations for historic preservation or restoration. First of all, it is allowed by the Act, but of equal importance is that these buildings attract people to our town because of our unique history. They attract tourism dollars that support our businesses, and they provide educational programs and internships, and they provide jobs for workers who are skilled in preservation and restoration. To provide an additional layer of security to the town, I've been in contact with Town Council and the representatives from Duxbury Rural and Historical Society, the Alden Kindred, and the First Parish Church for the drafting of agreements. The CPC voted to recommend these articles to the annual town meeting. I won't go into great detail, but basically, this chart indicates to you what our surcharge receipts have been over time, and the yellow is the state matching funds. Actual receipts for fiscal year 2018 was 508,808, and the estimated fiscal year 2019 receipts are an estimated 527,075. The median single-family CPA surcharge is $70.33. This past November, we received a 19% state match of $96,749. Seventy thousand of that money came from the Registry of Deeds, and roughly 27,000 came from the state budget surplus. State matching funds are derived from a $20 fee assessed at the Registry of Deeds, and this has not been adjusted since the year 2000. Legislation has been filed to increase this fee, and Governor Baker, recognizing the importance of this program, has indicated his support securing the promise of a state match. Slide two, please. I'd like to thank John Q. Adams also for helping with the preparation of these financials. For fiscal year 2020, the estimated revenue from surcharge receipts is estimated at 540,106, and a conservative state match of 15% equates to $81,015. As mandated by the Act, 10%, or a total of 30% of all receipts are deposited into the three accounts: historical preservation, housing, and open space. This year, $62,112 will be deposited into each account. The balance of the historic preservation will be rounded up, 421,000, 422,000. The balance of housing, roughly 611,000, and open space, 125,000. The certified undesignated fund balance, which may be used for any of these purposes, including recreation, is 301,325. Slide three, please. Pie chart. As you can see, open space has definitely taken the lion's share of the CPA funds. 16.3 million has been spent on open space, or 67% of all expenditures. We are carrying on the commitment to take land out of development, land that has conservation value, most importantly, for the protection of our water supply and the semi-rural character of the town. 4.9 million has been spent on historic preservation, or 20% of expenditures. 2.2 million on affordable housing, or 9% of expenditures. And I wish to point out that housing has additional sources of funding, such as development mitigation payments and donations. 824,000 has been spent on recreation, or 3%. Since 2002, we have had over 70 CPA articles and put nearly $24 million to work. Of that figure, over 9 million has come from the state matching funds. Looking back at this year, we acquired the 17-acre Williams property to allow better access to the right reservoir and immediately bought two future drinking water sites owned by the Water Department. We were also fortunate to acquire 26 acres of land off Summer Street for the purposes of extending the agricultural district. Twelve of the Town Clerk's historical books were sent out for preservation and repair. Six Keen Street dugouts have been constructed. The Bay Management Commission has installed a beautifully designed interpretive sign at Howland's Landing Park, the first of signs to be posted on the waterfront. And the Cemetery Department also installed interpretive signs at the Standish Cemetery, which will serve visitors for the 400th anniversary of the landing of the Mayflower. Three duplexes for low and moderate income housing have been constructed on Temple Street with the help of Habitat for Humanity and the oversight of the Duxbury Affordable Housing Trust. This land was acquired with CPA funds, and CPA money was used for the construction of, for the construction. I recognize late hour, we do have representatives, the people who made, gave us their proposals here to either expand on each of these articles or answer your questions. Thank you very much.
Ready? Ready. Article, article number 30.
I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate the sum of $31,056 from the Community Preservation Act Fund, FY 2020, anticipated revenues for the purpose of meeting the requirements of the Community Preservation Act in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, for the administrative expenses and charges for operation of the Community Preservation Committee for all the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020 inclusive. Finance Committee voted eight-zero to recommend.
Second. Do we have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on this. One for yes, two for no. Voting is closed, and the motion carries 100 to two. Article 31.
I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate the sum of $186,336 from the Community Preservation Act Fund, FY 2020, anticipated reserves for the purpose of meeting the requirements of the Community Preservation Act, Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 6, with $62,112 of said amount reserved for open space, $62,112 of said amount reserved for community housing, parentheses, affordable, and $62,112 of said amount reserved for historic resources, parentheses, preservation.
Second.
Finance Committee voted eight-zero to recommend.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on article 31. Oh my gosh, it's unanimous vote to zero. I'm sorry. It kind of threw me there, that's all.
It's because of Holly's presentation.
Article 32.
Okay. I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate a sum of $25,000 from the Historic Resources Reserve of the Community Preservation Fund to be utilized to pay for the preservation of permanent town records, to be expended under the direction of the Town Clerk. Finance, oh, sorry.
Second.
Finance Committee voted eight-zero to recommend.
Hearing none, I'll, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. Motion carries 101 to one.
Bob.
Article 33.
Okay, sorry. I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate a sum of $16,000 from the Historic Resources Reserve of the Community Preservation Fund to be utilized to pay for the preservation and digital imaging of historic records and/or appropriate such funds as a grant for the purposes of and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a grant agreement for such purposes on terms deemed in the best interest of the town by the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Finance Committee voted eight-zero to recommend.
Any questions or concerns? Any further debate? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on article 33. Voting is, voting is closed. Motion carries 96 to six. Article 34.
I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate a sum of $160,000 from the Housing Resources Reserve of the Community Preservation Fund to be utilized to pay to restore and preserve elderly, disabled housing at 59 Chestnut Street, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a grant agreement with the Duxbury Housing Authority for such purposes on terms deemed in the best interest of the town by the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Finance Committee voted seven-zero with one abstention to recommend.
Any questions or further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All, voting is open. All those in favor, press one. Voting is closed, and motion carries 102 to six. Article 35, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate a sum of $50,000 from the unreserved, undesignated fund balance of the Community Preservation Fund to be utilized to pay for the conversion of tennis courts to pickleball courts at the Tarklin Community Center.
Second.
Finance Committee voted eight-zero to recommend.
Any questions or discussion? We have one on the upper, upper, upper left.
Hello, Tom, Thomas knee, Bay Road. I don't know much about pickleball, but I do know that in the entire town of Duxbury, there is exactly one outdoor full-court basketball court. And I would like to make a motion. I move to amend Article 35 to replace pickleball courts with three pickleball courts and one full basketball court. And I have it written out for you. And I would really appreciate a second. To me, basketball is the, the best, most efficient use of space. It gets the most kids moving and sweating, and it's, it's one of the most universal sports. You can play with one person, two people, 10.
I'm going to ask Mr., I might ask Gordon to respond to that, and I have a question for Town Council myself.
Well, just to finish, I...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I was, I was just about done. But basketball, every gym in America, every school in America has an indoor basketball court. What do the kids do in the summertime? It's amazing to me that Duxbury has just one public full-court basketball court. So, I, I ask for a second.
Mr. Moderator, you want me to address any of that or wait till you get your answer? Wait, wait till you get your answer, or? Go ahead. So I guess I need to speak to the amendment. So I'm Gordon Cushing. I'm the Recreation Director for the Town in Duxbury. I also happen to be the Duxbury High School Boys' Basketball Coach. So my, my heart is not opposed to that. What I would tell you is this, there's only, I've been a resident in Duxbury for 56, going on 57 of my years, and there's only ever been at the maximum two outdoor basketball courts. They were located on the school campus. When the school was renovated and they did that project, they replaced it with one. There is a half-court out at Keen Street. We certainly could use more. There has been discussion in the Recreation Activities Committee about that. Mr. Byzani and I even had a conversation about an existing court that we're going to be looking at. What I can tell you is that the Recreation Activities Committee and myself have, have plans to try to address that. We would like to see some more courts as well. Having said that, what we have now are zero permanent pickleball courts. Pickleball, though you may not have heard of it, is the fastest-growing sport amongst baby boomers, boomers. It's moving from west to east and from south to north. Many towns around the area have pickleball courts. We currently have two unpermanent courts that we lined quickly at behind the library. We use portable nets. We have to drag them out of storage all the time, and yet, even with that, it's become very popular. We had over 80 adults in our league. Joanne from the Senior Center had a tournament that there was 210 people playing in it. What we face is a ground swell from the public, and this comes from them, a request to have some pickleball courts. I don't disagree with Mr. Knee. What I will tell you is, tennis court-wise, we have 13 public courts. We're proposing to just take two of those public courts out of service and convert them to six permanent pickleball courts. So while I'm split a little bit down the middle in my other job, I, I like to see more. I do think we'll be doing that in the future, bringing forward some of those ideas to town meeting. I hate to be on record as saying, I hope you don't vote for that amendment, but I'd like to have that voted down and go forward with our plan, which I'm happy to talk about for a couple of minutes, even though I know it's getting late.
Mr. Cushing, thank you very much for the explanation. Having said that, you probably noticed Town Council and I were talking. I'm going to rule that amendment out of order because these are CPC funds. There's a quirk in the law, if you will, and it says that, that only, we can only vote up or down on CPC recommended projects. We can't amend it, create a new purpose for it. So having said that, it's not a legal motion, so it, so it's, I'm ruling it out of order. So now we're back to the main motion that was originally proposed.
I think I'm almost done, but, but basically, everyone here probably knows where Tarklin is. There's two existing tennis courts there. We're asking for your support in providing some funds to convert those two tennis courts into six permanent pickleball courts. It's been voted on unanimously by the Recreation Activities Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, and the Board of Selectmen. We chose that site because there is more parking than in other sites. I don't know impervious or pervious, but it's one of those. We also have some bathrooms up there that our instructors have the key to, the building, so we'll be able to provide, you know, restrooms for our players. And I'll just tell you that, again, this came from the community. We've had a lot of people come knocking on our door. In fact, I think Holly's committee saw a bunch there that night. So I hope that you could support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, in the back.
Hi, Tammy Sareda, 521 West Street. I have a feeling that pickleball is much more popular than what I'm about to say, but I feel a responsibility to say this anyway. I used to live near a pickleball court, and when that pickleball court got installed, the noise from that sport was so unbearable that my family and I decided to sell our family home and move, as do two of my neighbors. And so I feel like I have a responsibility... And so, I feel like I have a responsibility to at least put the noise consideration on the floor, especially for the folks that live nearby. The noise does carry, and I can tell you from experience that it will drive you out of your mind. If you live there and listen to that every day, it will drive you insane. And so, I think, out of respect for people who live nearby, I personally will be voting against it. Not that I have anything against pickleball itself. I do not. It looks like a lot of fun, but on behalf of the neighbors, I'll vote against, and I hope other people will as well. Thank you.
So, it's actually not an out-of-line comment. You may have seen even our local paper, there were some comments about some noise related to a pickleball court. And I can tell you that that was a residential application where there was a court very close to houses. And they had lights there, and it was getting played at night. What I will tell you is there's been some developments into the pads. Pickleball is kind of a combination between tennis and badminton, if you will. There's been some progress in the-- they have these quieting paddles that folks can use, as well as our plan is to put a fence up in between the one neighbor that's near us. I'd also let everyone know that baseball is played up in that park during the spring and the summer all the time. It's a-- I won't call it a noisy place, but it's very heavily used by Duxbury Youth Baseball, so there's already a level of commotion, if you will, that's there. And I think the fencing that we've done up there in the past has really knocked that down, and we have had no complaints about that, substantive complaints up there for decades. So, again, I think we can address that, and I hope you will support us.
Thank you. May I have a question for you from the back?
Mary Lynn Carson, 21 Washington Street. This question is for, I guess, for Holly Morris. My question is, has the state CPA approved the change from tennis to pickleball? Is that an approved thing to build pickleball courts? I know the land is already used for recreation, so it's just changing it from one form of recreation to another, but the CPA money is actually used to pay for the work of, like, relining the court? I don't even know what a pickleball court looks like. I'm just asking.
You are tall. There is--
Give her a boost.
See, it's just recreation. They don't define what type of recreation. It covers everything.
So, but the CPA money is paying to, what, reline and I don't know--
Basically, it's converting. Converting from one type of sport to another. It's legal.
Yeah. And I would just add, there have been other communities that have done exactly this type of project.
Yeah, that's fine.
Within CPA.
Thank you. Any other questions or debate? Sensing none, I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor of the conversion of Tarklin's courts to pickleball, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Motion carries 86 to 12. Article 36, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate the sum of $52,250 from the Historic Resources Reserve of the Community Preservation Fund to be utilized as a grant to restore and preserve the windows and gutters downspouts at the historic King Caesar House located at 120 King Caesar Road, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a grant agreement with the Duxbury Rural and Historical Society on terms deemed in the best interest of the town by the Board of Selectmen, which agreement may include a requirement that the town be provided with a preservation restriction in said property and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept such restriction.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend.
Any questions or discussion? We're leaving. We're not asking a question. Sensing none, I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. Article carries 90 to 7. Article 37, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate a sum of $5,200 from the Historic Resources Reserve of the Community Preservation Fund to be utilized to pay to restore and preserve the windows at the Alden House Historic Site located at 105 Alden Street, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a grant agreement with the Alden Kindred of America, Inc., on terms deemed in the best interest of the town by the Board of Selectmen, which agreement may include a requirement that the town be provided with a preservation restriction in said property and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept such restriction.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend.
Do you have a question, sir?
Dwight Shepherd, 23, Carriage Lane. Every article since '30 has said there'd be a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen on these Community Preservation Commission questions, and I haven't heard any recommendations. I'm curious how the Selectmen feel on this, as well as the others.
Mr. Moderator, on behalf of the Board, they voted 3 to 0 on all of them.
Any other questions?
If you read the-- up there, their votes and our votes, I'm actually being somewhat redundant to say what our votes are. Sorry. I did-- I feel your pain.
Sensing no other questions, I'm going to ask for a vote on Article number 37, the restoration of the Alden House Historic Site.
I know Pixie. Poor Pixie.
And the motion carries 87 to 5. My gosh, we've made it to the end of the warrant. One last question.
I move that the town adopt the following statement of principles regarding decommissioning the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station and forward this statement to the Town of Duxbury State and Federal Delegations, to all select boards, and within the emergency planning zone of Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station, and to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, Entergy Corp., and the Holtech International, as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend, and I commend Pixie's patience with this body, as she is always last. Always.
Now, I'm almost 77. I'm going by Mary Lampert of--
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of 148 Washington Street. Pixie was adorable, but I don't know. Maybe it's at its time.
No.
Okay. What this is about, on May 31st, Pilgrim will cease operations. Clearly, that puts all the area in a safer position because it is not operating and will be defueled. However, that doesn't mean that there is no risk, and risk will remain certainly until the fuel leaves the site and until the site, which is contaminated radiologically and with other hazardous materials, is cleaned up. And so, the communities have to remain vigilant, and this is the whole point of the article, to get opinion leaders, legislators educated. Entergy hopes to transfer the license to Holtech Company, which is a manufacturer of dry cast. They've never decommissioned before, but there's a lot of money in decommissioning as these reactors go down, and a lot of companies are getting into it. If the license is transferred, there's good news. Holtech Company intends to decommission in eight years. That means the job will be done by 2027. If Entergy remains the licensee, they're going to take the full 60 years. That means the job would not be done, and actually, it wouldn't even begin until about 50 years, and it wouldn't end until 2079. And so, that satisfies one of our goals, which is a speedy decommissioning. No matter who owns Pilgrim, the spent nuclear fuel will be moved, and this is good news, out of the spent fuel pool within two to three years and put into dry casts. That was a victory, big effort for votes we had here, for example, and continued pressure. And other good news, the casts will be moved from their current location, very close to Cape Cod Bay, to higher ground. The bad news is that it will be very visible from Rocky Hill Road, a public thoroughfare, and the casts are vulnerable to a terrorist attack. So, we have to be working on increased security, blast shields or something, and that is one of our recommendations. Entergy and Holtech assume that DOE will be taking the fuel off-site, all of it, by And that was before marijuana was available in Plymouth. I really don't know where that assumption comes from. And that's a real problem, because the cost estimates are based upon the fuel leaving in 2062. And if you look at their-- well, you wouldn't want to do this, but if you did look at their cost estimates, you see they have very little money by 2062. And so, therefore, who's going to pay to babysit this fuel? Who's going to pay when the NRC says the casts have to be changed every 100 years? The pad has to be changed. The casts only have a warranty for 25 years. What if they leak? Who's going to pay? And this leads to a very important point. It looks like we are going to pay, because currently, there is not sufficient funds. If Holtech takes over Pilgrim, they are not paying any money for it. They aren't buying it. They're getting the Decommissioning Trust Fund, which is $1.03 billion. And they're a limited liability company. If Pilgrim, if Entergy continues to be the owner, they are not putting any money into it either. They are just relying on that Decommissioning Trust Fund to do the work. In analyzing the cost estimates, it's clear that they make too many assumptions and forget too many things. So, it's very clear to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's clear to a citizen group, Pilgrim Watch, which also is intervening in this process, that there is an insufficient amount of money. That matters to us, because if there isn't enough money, we as citizens, taxpayers, will be left holding the bag. And as important, the job will not be done. The property slopes to the bay. Most of the buildings are very close to Cape Cod Bay. The history of poor management over the years has shown there's a lot of contamination on that site. Although their cost estimates assume that the site is clean, and therefore, very little money will have to be spent, that is just not true. We have climate change with sea level rise, increased storms. So, if stuff is not removed very quickly and thoroughly, it will wind up in the bay and impact us. So, that is clearly one of the biggest issues. And the big issue for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Attorney General, Pilgrim Watch, which is intervening, is that there be an early site analysis right at the start so they know what, in fact, is there, as opposed to what they're doing now. If Entergy continues to own the property, they will not do an actual detailed site analysis until two years before the license is terminated. That would be in 58 years from now. And as far as Holtech is concerned, they're relying on very old site analyses that were done during license renewal or generic studies, as opposed to actually putting a shovel into the ground. And so, that is an issue we're very concerned. So, I know it's late. These principles, largely, there be sufficient funds, contingency funds added, that the cleanup is done quickly, that an early site assessment is done, and also, for public safety, that there be increased security measures for the spent fuel, which is going to be visible from a public road. And each dry cast has half the cesium-137 that was released in Chernobyl, and there will be, now I understand, 71 lined up by Rocky Hill Road. So, that's something to think about. Also, we're very concerned about emergency planning. Be funded so Kevin Nord and our community can do what they want to do to better protect our community, and also that funds be provided by the licensee for Mass Department of Public Health to continue to do onsite and offsite monitoring. So, this is what it's all about, and if anyone's ever interested in pursuing this subject further, I'd be more than happy, and our committee would be more than happy, to put a presentation for the community or just to email you mountains of information. So, remember, this doesn't cost you anything. In fact, if you vote in favor of this article, you will be doing your children and grandchildren a big favor. And we talk about community preservation, and I know, in your wisdom, that you had me follow the community presentation group because you realized this was the frosting on the cake, to preserve our community.
Cherry on the sundae.
So.
And I'm going to take that as a sign that people are ready to vote.
They want to go home.
Take a win.
Okay.
Oh, no.
I would like to thank St. Mary and her team, who have labored for years on this subject, and she has agreed to, we're going to be stuck with it for another 60 years. She's going to be in charge all the way.
Now, Becky's younger than I am.
But I would hope, and in one sense, I'm asking for a vote, I think we would send a very clear message to Pilgrim and its entities if we had a unanimous vote, a sense of this meeting, in our letter to them regarding the principles. So, I'm making a pitch for that. Whoever that pesky one person is, maybe tonight you could flip.
Thank you very much, and we also want to thank, as a committee, the continued support of the Board of Selectmen and others in the community, and also our legislators. That Senator O'Connor has an important bill in the legislature now, as does Josh Cutler, and the whole South Shore delegation is working together to have legislation. I think there are six bills now at the State House, and the Attorney General has certainly stepped up to the plate, and the governors on board through Secretary Beaton in this litigation that started. So, I think we're together as a community recognizing that this is the biggest deconstruction job the Commonwealth will ever face, and we want to do it right, because the value of the South Shore and the Cape is the cleanliness of our environment.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please press one. All those opposed, press two.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you for your support. I'm placing —
Mr. Flynn, you're a persuasive speaker. The motion passes 90 to zero.
Yay! Woo-hoo!
Before we adjourn, just three very quick things. We have an election in the 23rd. Last Saturday, we voted on a garage or the planning for Garage Republic Works.
Facility.
Please.
Facility.
I'm sorry, facility, not a garage. That is subject to a debt exclusion, whether you're for or against it. However you voted, you need to turn out to the election, because that will determine what happens next. That work isn't finished. Yes, turn back your voting cards on your way out. If you found this very fascinating and enjoyed yourself, please fill out a talent bank form. And finally, I want to thank everybody for their patience and understanding. We had a few rough spots as we worked our way through the zoning articles, and I appreciate everybody's help. Finally, that completes the business. In the warrant for the annual town meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We're out.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.